I have an indication offered by Commissioner Waddington followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, give us guidance and wisdom to make proper decisions. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crusier, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Lockhart.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Lloyd.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Mr. Wadding.
Here.
Commissioners, we have before you the minutes of our meeting on February 25, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I'm going to accept the minutes of the February 25th meeting and dispense with formal readings.
Second.
Second motion and second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We have something special tonight, and as a new tradition for the City Commission, we have a new firefighter joining the ranks who is going to be sworn in. Mr. Bookstir, I understand you're going to do the ceremonial swearing-in as the hiring agent for the city.
Yes.
And Chief, would you be joining?
Yes.
We'll be doing this going forward for both the firefighters and the police officers in recognition of the special contributions they make to our community. Yeah, good.
Sure. The chairman's going to be on there.
So, on behalf of the City Commission and our fire chief, we're really excited to welcome Stephen to the family. Tonight, the fire department is an incredibly exciting group that does really important lifesaving work every day in our community. So, for those of you here to support Stephen, congratulations. We'll put him to work, but we're going to do our best job to keep him safe, and I know Rick takes that very seriously. So, welcome. So, Stephen, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Stephen J. Mott, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Stephen J. Mott, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of my citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America and the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So, help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Michael Moore.
As part of becoming a firefighter in the service, one of the most proud traditions and also moments is when you get pinned with your badge officially with the city that you're working for. Is anyone here before we go any further that you would like to pin you here today? That's a good choice.
Good idea.
Okay, here you go. Go ahead and pin him. Find your life away.
We'll take just a moment to allow his fellow firefighters to step out, and anyone else that wishes to step out would be glad to have them. Thank you for being here. The good news is the temperature of the room just went down 10 degrees. All those folks are locked. We'll get back to my agenda. Okay, we turn now, let's see, I am going to go out of order. I understand that Jason Worling and Tandra Frisby are here on behalf of the Recreation Department and the Midtown Supper Club, and you have another event that you're getting to shortly, and we need to get you out of here so that you can go support that event. So, if you want to go ahead and make your presentation, then we will turn to audience participation.
Thank you, President and Commission. We have a lot going on, just like this commission meeting does, so we're going to try and keep it as brief as we can. Tandra and Annette Soleat from our office are here. We have our first-ever spring break camps and, sorry, our spring camps and events for this season. This is the first time we've ever put out a spring guide with a few things that we wanted to let everybody know about. We are going to talk about Midtown Supper Club. We just had, we don't get in front of commission too much, so we're just going to try and get this as quick as we can because I have, we have our volleyball league, adult volleyball league tonight, and also they have to get back to Midtown Supper Club. So, I have copies of these. If anybody wants to take a closer look than just the screen of our guides, our guides are going to go out to all kids in the schools, in Sandusky City Schools, Sandusky Central Catholic Schools, and the Monroe Prep students will also receive these. So, they're all printed, they're two-sided. We don't have registration forms on these, and Annette's going to get into why later on with this, but our spring break camp is in its second year. That'll be at Sandusky High School, March 25th through the 27th, new for this year. Our couple of things, but one thing that we're highlighting is archery as part of this year's opportunities. We're continuing our gymnastics program. We also have our hip-hop dance program, and then our T-ball and coach pitch league is going to be starting here very, very soon. So, if anyone's interested, please check out our website. I'm going to go quick to the next. A couple of things that are happening, annual things are happening. The golf course is going to be opening April 1st. We've done a few improvements in the clubhouse and at the course. Easter egg hunt is always the fastest 10 minutes of finding eggs you will find anywhere in the area. We say go, and the thing, the event's over in about 10 minutes, and everyone goes and watches a movie at the state theater. Our Go Green Sandusky, that includes the drop-off day at the boat ramp, and our Arbor Day celebrations at the greenhouse on the 27th. And then our Midtown Supper Club Presents, which is something that Tandra's going to talk to you about here in a second. I do want to mention that Dragons and Bacon Fest is on for this year, and it is September 14th. It's a Saturday. Get your boat signed up. Quick plug for that. And our Run Sandusky Series, which if you saw the register, they did a story. We have collaborated and partnered with seven different races within the City of Sandusky. If you do five of those seven, you'll get a really cool hoodie, hooded sweatshirt. If you do six out of the seven, or seven out of the seven, you will get to get entered into a prize package. So, there's a lot of stuff going on. I'm going to keep things moving and have Tandra tell you all about Midtown Supper Club. It's a great program, and we're going to show you a quick video as well.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to share. We are starting in our 10th week of this awesome 16-week pilot program called Midtown Supper Club. We have kids representing Sandusky City Schools, Perkins, St. Mary's, Monroe Prep, and also homeschool children that attend. With that being said, this is a pilot program, and we'll access, excuse me, we'll assess and evaluate at the end to go over what worked during the 16 weeks, what didn't work, was 16 weeks too long, you know, et cetera. But I can tell you from the response from the kids, the parents, and the community, there will be a cycle two of Midtown Supper Club. At this time, we're going to show you a brief video, and then I have two quick points to make, and excuse my lack of energy on this video. I wasn't feeling too well.
We're here today is Midtown Supper Club's culinary program session. Every Monday from 4:00 to 6:00, we have four local chefs that have agreed to share their time and talent to teach four-course meals to the kids downstairs. This is a pilot program. It's a 16-week program here at Mohawk Studio, Halo Live. And again, this is a different kind of program because it is interest-based. If your child is interested in cooking, then they will sign up for Mondays only. They're interested in everything that we're doing here at Midtown Supper Club, then they sign up for all four days.
Tandra approached me about this program months ago before it became a reality, and asked if I would be interested in volunteering my time to give back a little and to do something for the kids in the community, and I was really excited about the opportunity. So, I started on the journey with them from the very beginning, and we've created this pilot program. It was really amazing to talk with the kids and to see how interested they were. I really wasn't sure what to expect when I signed on, but I'm really happy that I did. What we're teaching is going beyond the actual recipes and the kitchen skills itself. They're in a new environment with new kids. It's not their normal routine, or kind of getting them outside of their comfort zone using equipment that they've never seen, products that they've never heard of. So, I think they're learning quite a bit.
I have kids of my own. They're grown. I'm also the mentor of a 10-year-old boy, so I can help that one boy in Port Clinton. But how can I help more than one kid at a time? So, we have an incredible facility here at 805 Wayne Street. We have a great kitchen downstairs. We have an incredible recording studio. So, if there's an opportunity to help a lot of kids, like 90 to 100 kids, it's a great way of giving back to Sandusky.
The students are learning actually the basics now. Every week, when the chefs take on the students, I had the first class. I taught them the basics, knife safety, sanitation, how to clean, how to clean after your messes when you're done, clean as you go, stuff like that. Also educate them a little bit about their leavening agents for breads. One of my things is going to be the appetizer, which the kids are going to learn a little about sweet potatoes, about also about using torches, and they're also going to do biscuits too by scratch. It's a huge event. It's good for the community, good for the kids, keeps them off the street, keeps them out of trouble, gives them something really positive to do all the time.
I think it's a great opportunity for the kids and also for the chefs because as professionals, they get a chance to not just teach, but they get hands-on experience working with kids, and it's like a collaboration. So, the kids really enjoy being hands-on and up close and personal with chefs.
All right, and then Jason's going to do a little slideshow of some photos that we've captured. April 28th is the actual, it's called Midtown Supper Club Presents, and it's going to be where the kids will be able to showcase what they've learned in the culinary program. The other disciplines that we do at Midtown Supper Club are dance, and then we have Wacky Wednesdays, and then there's a collaboration with Mohawk Studio and Sandbox Records, and they have a group that they've put together that'll be showcased as well. What they, what you can expect at the April 28th event is a four-course meal prepared by all the chefs in training under the guidance of the four chefs, Brad, Katie, Clinton, Derek. Two dance routines by Diversity Dance, Kashmir, Constance, and Brandy will be the facilitators of that. And for the first time on stage live, you will see Mohawk Studio and Sandbox Records' new group called A Bunch of Kids, and they'll be, that's the name that they chose. And they will be showing you guys the song. They'll be performing the song that they wrote, created, and it's really amazing to see. So, there's a lot of stuff happening. I can tell you that the April 28th event starts at 4:00, and it'll be at 805 Wayne Street at Mohawk Studio, and there will be donations accepted at the door. There will be more details on how you can get involved with that, but the kids are pretty excited, even as far as Annette showing them how to make the centerpieces. Everything that you'll see, if you attend, I hope you all will, is going to be from the kids. They'll just be guided, but it's pretty awesome to see. So, thank you for listening, and then we're going to let Annette come and share how the next level that we've gone to at Sandusky Rec. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I'm going to talk about tonight is, I've actually been with the city just almost quite a year, and I know when I came in, Jason said, you know, we really need to upgrade how we take our reservations, everything, our reservations and our programs. We were doing paper and pencil. We did a lot of research, and we are now going to online registration. We did a soft open. We did it March 1st, very successful. What allows people to do, it allows them to register for anything at any time. So, instead of having to come into our facilities between 8:00 to 5:00, they know I have the ability to do it at any time. The nice thing that I am able to do is I'm able to see what time they register. So, I've had someone that I noticed was 4:00 in the morning when they did a registration, or 7:30, so that allows what it does. What this here is, is it is accessible through our website, and what you basically do is is an individual would go ahead and register onto the system. Go ahead, Jason. Can you click on the, now go to the main page. So, what they would do is, first of all, you would create an account, and once you create an account, you would create it as a family, and then each individual, individual member of your family would be involved. You would then select, for instance, if you're registering for a program, you would click on the program icon, and here's what our programs are listed. Currently, we have our gymnastics, and we have our T-ball and our hip-hop dance. So, what we have in here are, is individuals can register. As you see on the icon, it says register now. They would click on that, and they can register. You can register multiple individuals, and then the nice component about this is, is you also can go ahead and pay online. Understanding some people still don't like to pay online, we can take the registration in our office. We still do, still do accept cash and credit or checks here in the office. Another nice feature of Rec Desk is facilities, so all of our shelters are available for registration online as well. It helps with, you know, human error, duplication of booking of a facility. The one things we will still do in-house are gazebo's. There's specific questions we need to ask for that, so we will still do that one in-house. So, any facility that we have or any shelter can be reserved online. We have put a, I have the ability to put a block on it, so if, four days out, so that we can make sure that our facilities are cleaned and prepped and ready to go as we notify our buildings and grounds. And then lastly, go to the calendar. It does have a calendar, and it basically, on the calendar, it shows everything. So, for instance, this was the month of March. It shows all of our programming on here. If he scrolled over to another one, it'll show all of the shelter rentals to show that they are booked, or if, for instance, if we have a program that we are running. So, if it's a walk or a race that the city is involved with, that will all show on the calendar. And that's all I have about Rec Desk. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
What about sponsorships? Because some of the stuffs, I saw the 85, the hip-hop, 85 bucks. If you've got a family, say three or four kids, that's pretty expensive. Some of the other programs are what, 25, 35?
The hip-hop, I'm sorry. The hip-hop dance was $85 for four sessions. What they were $25, we gave them a reduced rate. We still do have our scholarship forms for Sandusky residents that they can complete in-house for that reduced rate.
Do we have funding in that right currently, or?
Yes, we do have money set aside for scholarship funding.
Okay, so if somebody wants to donate, they can pitch in and?
Absolutely.
You have questions?
Of all of them or just her?
Of all of us. Sure.
Of anyone, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Frisby, would you, again, April 28th?
April 28th at 4:00. Doors open at 4:00. Dinner is going to be served at 4:30.
That's a dinner and a show.
Dinner and show.
You would like the community to support this?
Absolutely.
To keep this going, and we'd get this for a donation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is, that's great. Hopefully, the community will get very much involved and get behind this and come to this event so that the kids will smile when the room is filled.
Well, I just told the culinary group, which meets on Monday, that I was coming to speak about them here with the officials, and they were pretty excited. So, anytime between now and April 28th, Monday through Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00, you guys are welcome to just stop in and just see that magic just happening there. It's really pretty cool.
Mr. Twine.
I just want to thank Jason, Tandra, and Annette for what you've done for our Rec Department, providing a diverse slate of activities and events for our kids. I think it's really good. I think it's, I can just see it growing from here. I do encourage people that want to donate and help to do that, but you guys have done a really good job of bringing us up to the 21st century and providing some, again, some diverse programs that will pique the interest of a lot of different kids in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Twine said. You guys are an awesome group of people, and I think you have the best jobs in the city because you get to have fun when you come to work, and I know you guys have a great time with all the kids and just any events that you're working on. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and for all that you do. Without your work, it's just a bunch of pretty parks, and this is what brings it alive and brings our community out, so, and makes, and builds a community. So, thank you. All right. I know you need to go, so.
Yep, back to Midtown.
So, next, Ms. Bemis, we, I understand that you are here to make a?
That audience participation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just rolling right along. So, we will turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items, please step to the microphone, share with us, share with us your name and address and your thoughts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, representing Citizens for Responsive Government Sandusky this evening. We have some of our members in the audience tonight. Appreciate them being here. The concerns that we'd like to share this evening are on items 12, 13, and 14, which is the repeal and revote of the Cook and Huntley Building, which are grants and tax abatements, and then there's going to be a revote on identical legislation. The question we have tonight for the commission and perhaps the law director is what section of the city charter or state law requires a repeal and then a revote on the same legislation based on Ms. Lloyd's conflicts of interest with the owners of those buildings? Remind commission that this legislation, especially for the Cook Building, was first passed on June, in June of 2018. Since June 2018, we have had our research team calling the Ohio Ethics Commission monthly to ask for whatever opinion, legal opinion, Ms. Lloyd may have asked pertaining to the voting on these, for three items. To date, as of early this morning, no opinion has been rendered by the OEC in Columbus. So, someone's not telling the truth once again. If the purpose of the repeal and revote on these three issues is to save Ms. Lloyd from conflicts of interest with these issues, repeal and revote will probably not save her from future prosecution or complaints filed with the OEC. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I too would like to talk about this repeal. Three pieces of legislation we're repealing, the Cook and Huntley Building abatements and the $500,000 grant, and we're going to revote this again. This is very embarrassing. This is a major, major project, and we're going to revote because one commissioner couldn't get it through her head that she's not supposed to vote on this. Public records is a wonderful thing. If you know where to search, you can come up with all kinds of stuff, and when you did this two weeks ago, I knew you were going to be in big trouble. There's, there's no excuse for this. The only reason we're revoting this is to get her out of trouble. This should have never, ever happened with all her partnerships. You could just look it up for public records. It's there. It's all there. You've got a thick file on her. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Ted Castor, Linden Way, Sandusky, Ohio. I am president of Erie County Economic Development. I know that you are going to consider our annual funding tonight. I would like to thank you for the past support of our organization, almost 30 years spurring economic development near Erie County. There was a time where most of our clients, the investment dollars into Erie County, weren't going into the City of Sandusky. They were going outside the city limits. Through the efforts of everyone in this room, that has dramatically changed. Most of our action, activity, and efforts are within the city, and we're proud to be aligned with the city. Matt Lasco sits on our board, our Director Abby, and Assistant Director Sarah, our good shepherds of your funds, and I think that together, we're making a positive difference for not only Erie County, but the City of Sandusky, and thank you for your past support.
Bob Waldoch, 2015 Cedar Point Road. I'm here to comment on the potential rezoning of eight lots on First and Second Street. I'm a member of the 1643 Limited, which owns the former Apex site on First Street. I have attended many of the planning commission meetings regarding the application that is in front of you today, and until this afternoon, I have been reluctant to speak for any, for or against the proposed rezoning of the eight lots on the south side of First Street. Even then today, I am only able to give limited information until various applications with the Corps of Engineers and the Ohio EPA have been approved. Over the last year, 1643 Limited has been working to redevelop the 15 acres on the north side of First Street. By covenant with the Ohio EPA, the land is currently listed for commercial industrial development only. We have been working with them to change this to restricted residential. When Mr. Ringel's application went in front of the planning commission, staff was not in favor of changing the zoning from single-family to commercial rec. The bicentennial plan approved by the planning and city commissions have suggested that the property along First Street remain residential. In my opinion, as a result of several discussions centering around the numerous residential lots available and the longstanding history of the Ringel family's ownership and desire to see something happen in the area, the planning commission chose to override staff's recommendation. All of this happened without formal knowledge of what was occurring across the street. In 2017 and 2018, Waldoch Properties, too, purchased the eight lots on the south side of First Street next to Mr. Ringel's property. We removed two houses and a garage and ceded the land. This was done specifically to clean up the area and make way for a bigger residential development on the former Apex site. For the record, we are not opposed to the building Mr. Ringel's proposed purchaser wants to build. We do, however, have objections to it being directly on First Street. We believe it is better suited for other land the Ringels own farther south. Personally, Jeff and I have a good relationship, and I applaud his efforts to try to get something, anything, started on lots that his family has owned for decades. I would ask, however, that the commission return the recommendation of a spot zoning back to the planning commission for further review based on new information. If approved today, the potential for a building not conducive to residential neighborhoods is too great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldoch. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Ringel. My office is at 421 Jackson Street. I rise to speak to the zoning issue that's before the commission. While 25% of lots on First Street and Second Street west of Farwell may not be, may be owner-occupied, this begs the question of the property east of Farwell. By my count, there are approximately 145 lots on both sides of Second Street and on the south side of First Street, east of Farwell. Of these 145 lots are approximately 24 residential houses, which comprise about 16% of all the lots in that area. More importantly, I know for a fact that 10 of those 24 residential lots are owned by Mr. Waldoch. One is owned by Cedar Point, and one by Erie Metropolitan Housing. That means that there are approximately... That means that there are approximately 12 residential houses out of the 24, or at least 50% are not owner-occupied, but in fact rental properties. A stable neighborhood of owner-occupied housing doesn't really exist in this area when, in fact, there's approximately 80% of that neighborhood area is and remains vacant lots. So you have approximately half of the 16% of residential housing being owner-occupied. In other words, 8%. So the true character of this neighborhood for the last 75 years has not been owner-occupied housing, but it's basically been undeveloped vacant lots. At one time, about 30, 40 years ago, my family owned approximately 200 vacant lots in that area. Currently, we own about 40 vacant lots in that area, which is still roughly about 30 to 30 to 40% of the, that neighborhood. While it's true that commercial recreational zoning allows for one and two-family dwellings, it also allows boathouses and other types of development. Obviously, the likelihood of a boathouse south of, on the south side of First Street is not going to happen because there's no waterfront access, and many of the other permitted commercial recreational zoning uses are highly unlikely in this area, like, for example, beaches and swimming pools, hunting and fishing clubs, shooting ranges, arenas and auditoriums, golf courses, driving ranges, riding academies, bowling alleys, assembly halls, dance halls, skating rinks. Although a few of those could occur in that area, it's extremely unlikely that any of those developments will occur due to constraints and practicalities of the neighborhood. And similarly, if there were a bowling alley or a skating rink in that neighborhood, I can't see where that would be considered detrimental as opposed to the existence of these very types of things in other neighborhoods. And, and if you look at the commercial developments that actually do exist in this area, it appears that commercial recreational, the types of developments, commercial recreational are very, very similar. There's dormitory housing just to the east of these properties. There's boat repair directly on the north side of First Street. There's, there's boat storage. There's, there's condominiums. There's a drive-through over on, on Causeway. So those are all very similar. Now, CR does, in fact, allow transient occupancy as well, but that's already allowed in the commercial recreational zoning that's on the north side of First Street directly to the east of Mr. Waldoch's proposed development. And, and allowing commercial recreational on the south side of First Street is, is very similar to the, the nature of the area. As far as the city plan to, to make First Street residential in that area, if you look at, from, from Sycamore Line all the way to Lane Street, that's residential, but from Lane Street east to the Causeway, there hasn't been any residential development in that area for at least the last 50 years. No, other than the boathouses that were built on First Street, which were zoned commercial So the type of development that you've actually seen along there has been commercial. It's been businesses. It's been Mr. Waldoch's new, new main office. It's been, it's been Lyman Harbor. It's been any number of, of boathouses and boat storage areas. So the, the immediate benefits in this area to develop the vacant properties, if, in fact, we don't get it rezoned, it's highly unlikely anything's going to be done with this property in the next 50 years. I mean, the only residential that exists along First Street is the line of houses that my family built 75 years ago, and no other residential house, and that's directly across from Bimini in that area. No residential houses have been built, built on First Street since then. So I submit, ladies and gentlemen, commission, we don't rezone this. Nothing's going to happen. It just won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ringel. Commissioners and the audience, I let Mr. Waldoch and Mr. Ringel go longer than I normally would onto this first part of the rules because we're going to a hearing shortly, and rather than cut up your remarks and make you start and stop, I just thought it'd be better to let you go ahead. So normally, it's three minutes during this part of the meeting. Sorry, that was not directed at you, Mr. Zula.
He's saying, "Mr. Zula."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was, I was, I was going to point out that anybody wanted, that you had the public hearing coming. It was one of those awkward things where we're talking about it in the public participation period, but then we're going to almost immediately go to a hearing on the same subject. So I decided to hold off on that. I might mention it, but I wanted to talk about the ordinance, the land, the changes to the landmark ordinance, and I wanted to say that, that a lot of this is housekeeping. I think it'll make it a slightly better ordinance. I did correct some little things and wanted to let you know that if you had any questions about it, fine, otherwise, I'll be, I'm here, so otherwise, I'd encourage passing the, the changes to the landmark ordinance. They were recommended, as you note in your, in your package, it was recommended that you pass those by the planning commission, by the planning commission. On, on First Street, it was sort of a surprise that it was recommended for, in my opinion. I think maybe the applicant even was surprised that the planning commission recommended for it because the staff recommended against it, and, and the discussion went both ways. So it should be an interesting discussion. I would, I would agree that it would have been a different discussion, slightly different discussion. I can't say that it would have been a different turnout, or would, or wouldn't have, had we been aware of the development right in the neighborhood. We still really don't know what, it's, nothing has come to the planning commission yet, so it, it may be something that changes to the zoning map generally have long-term implications and probably should duly deliberate it before they're, they're actually made. So I'll, I'll have more remarks, I think, in the public hearing, possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda Then we will turn to a presentation by Abby Bemis and the Erie County Economic Development Corporation. Abby, the floor is yours.
I'll start while I'm getting these, but thank you very much for your time this evening. I'll echo our board president's comments, and thank you for your longstanding partnership with Erie County Economic Development Corporation. Myself and our program manager, Sarah, are going to tag-team this update, so I'll run through, interrupt with questions. We can stay just to the end, either one. So our mission at ECADEC, you should be familiar with. The name gives us away. We're looking to foster and, you know, grow in the region as a whole. I think the part of regionalisms, the underscoring theme when it comes to ECADEC, I was just updating some statistics this week and saw, again, that 57% of residents, of workers in Erie County and in our surrounding counties are traveling between counties every day for work. So it just really underscores the importance of not just your city performing well, but how is North Central Ohio doing? How is all of Erie County doing? Those numbers about workers really only increase as the smaller you look at a jurisdiction. So you might be working in Perkins Township, in the city of Huron, or in Huron County, and it's important that we all are successful together, and that's what ECADEC is focused on, on a day-to-day basis. I put up our board members. You heard earlier from our board president, Ted Castor. I also want to recognize Pamela Smith in the audience, and of course, Mr. Lasco. We have a few new board members with us this year, joining us from Excerco Medical, a medical device company, in Wakemen, Civista Bank, and Kalahari. So I, I share this with you because I think our board of directors gets at how we come to our vision, how we decide what activities are going to be facilitated through ECADEC. It's a merger of your vision as public institutions and a merger of private business leaders, new and old institutions in the community, and the recognition that really one can't be successful without the other. This point reiterates that again. We're all about collaboration between these entities. We are a public-private partnership in vision, also in funding, so I think it's important to underscore that in addition to your commitment to us, we're frequently raising funds from private businesses, philanthropic institutions. That's traditionally about 60 to 70% of our funding on a year-to-year basis, and we have added 33 new private sector investors over the last four years. So our goal there is to leverage your funds and, again, make sure we have a cohesive vision as a community and as an organization. So we'll just provide some brief updates under the banner of each of our four priorities as an organization. The first being existing industry. We want to grow the existing business base. Statistics will show you over and over again, that's where a lot of net new job creation will come from in a community. So our commitment to you and to really all of Erie County's communities and businesses in the community is to be proactive in that effort, make sure that we're reaching out to existing businesses on a regular basis with simply the goal of understanding what challenges they're facing and understanding what opportunities they might have, and then hopefully connecting any dots that are necessary to make sure they make that investment decision to choose to invest in Erie County. So two examples that I shared from 2018. One, the Certainty Corporation, just south of the Turnpike in Myland, committed $38 million expansion to their asphalt processing center. That's 10 new jobs in the region. That's 200 retained jobs in the region. Likewise, also out in, in the Myland area, a commitment for an expansion from Lake Erie Arms, a small existing business in the outskirts of the county, establishing a major commercial presence. That project was $12 million commitment, and I think about 40 new jobs altogether from that and five jobs retained. So I highlight these two examples because these are the kind of opportunities that, while physically located in Myland Township, will provide opportunity for residents of the city of Sandusky and beyond, really. Our emphasis for our existing business strategy is really be well-networked, making sure we're being proactive about connecting the businesses and then having them touch base with things that are of pressing importance to their business. So I provided a few examples on the types of connections that we're making on behalf of businesses. Again, it's about what opportunities might they have, whether that's new technology like additive manufacturing, or what challenges are they facing, like talent management, and are we connecting them to resources to solve either? Business attraction is another key focus of our work and our commitment to you. A lot of our business attraction work, I will again use the word proactive and again use the word prepared. Businesses, at the end of the day, it's all about speed, risk, and money. We say that a lot in sales. Our job as an organization is to make sure that we're reducing each of those things. How can it be less risky to make that decision? How can it be cost-effective? And how can we get there quickly? Speed to market is a big thing for a business making a decision. And this matters for small businesses. This matters for large businesses. So our commitment to you is to make sure we have a lot of up-to-date site information. Those requests that we get want a response within two to three days, and they're, they're arduous to fill out, so we spend a lot of time on that, both in the city of Sandusky and in the region. Then in particular, you of course have witnessed the thriving activity in your downtown business district. We partner often with the Sandusky Economic Development Office to help facilitate some of those opportunities. And here's a few stats on those things that I just mentioned. I'll again emphasize, there's a lot going on in your community. It's kudos to everyone in this room, what we're seeing, and, and I'll say that when we travel Erie County, it's talked about. What's happening in downtown Sandusky makes a difference to the ability to a Myland firm to bring in those key management positions they've been recruiting. So thank you for what you're doing to build a quality place that makes a difference for both businesses and for talent attraction.
I'll speak a little bit about entrepreneurship as one of our key priorities. We focus on this in our office, as Abby was mentioning, about existing businesses. We know that 61% of new jobs actually come from small businesses. So in addition to some of the economic growth we see from kind of nurturing small businesses, we also see strong community development, which is key in areas like a downtown Sandusky. So we nurture these entrepreneurs through our RISE program, which is the regional incubator for sustainability and entrepreneurship, kind of a mouthful. But one way that we strive to use this program is assisting with the Sandusky Economic Development Program, so we can help vet applicants or refer them if they're a good fit for that program. And in fact, we have seen great success in RISE over the past year. As you can see, that's our client activity. It's the highest volume of entrepreneurs we've seen in the program's history, and part of that we attribute to the strong referral network that we've built up over time, one of those sources being the city of Sandusky. So we are very closely with the city landlords, building owners in the area, past entrepreneurs that we've worked with, to be sure that we can continue that flow of entrepreneurs, people with ideas, through our program. So we had 80 mentoring sessions last year, and 44% of those were Sandusky-based entrepreneurs. Some of these you see opening physical storefronts. Some of these you see operating what we call a side hustle online, or some of them might still just be dreaming, but we're here to support them all. Just looking ahead for our entrepreneurship program in 2019, we're putting a strong emphasis, like the city of Sandusky is, on diversity and inclusion, so working on some strategic partnerships, some intentional language and outreach in that regard. I handed around a letter to each of you commissioners, just a testimonial from one of the clients that went through our entrepreneurship program. If you have a chance later to read that, we would appreciate that.
And just opened shop in downtown Sandusky.
Yes.
Really exciting. If you haven't been there. And that's her photo.
So the next piece that we focus on is local image and advocacy, and what we hope to do with this piece of our work is really reinforce to the public that Erie County is business-friendly and pro-growth. So our audience is very targeted. We target the business owner or the individual looking to make an investment in this community, and our stories are very direct in that way, in which we feature best practices and case studies of innovative businesses, certain details that the typical person watching TV might not be interested in, but the business decision-maker would be. And so we had four major campaigns last year, and the city of Sandusky was featured heavily just due to the breadth of innovative and diverse companies and what they're doing in your city right now. So of our four campaigns, actually, one of our featured campaigns was called Centuries of Success, celebrating what we called legacy companies in conjunction with the bicentennial. So we, we featured last year a Mac Iron Works, a Gunlock Sheet Metal, Toff Siri, many businesses, whether it was a direct spotlight on them or whether we were speaking of a larger business cluster in the area. But we've seen great success. Our open rate is actually 31%, which is above industry standard. About 3,000 to 4,000 unique readers for each campaign, and we continue to grow those, adding video and new, new multimedia features, like our recent effort with this progressive Sandusky video. If you haven't seen it yet, please do. We partnered with Lake Erie Shores and Islands to kind of play off of the Election Day decision and show what else is happening in Sandusky, again, positioning us as business-friendly, not just come live here, come vacation here, but you can do more here.
So kudos. Thank you for giving us a lot of good content. And then our last strategic priority as an organization, we call quality of place, and simply put, this is about bringing the right people together, the best of resources from the region, and it's meant, so we talked a lot about individual business assistance early on in the presentation. This principle is about, there's a lot of issues that are of importance to businesses and residents that there's no one owner of. So workforce development is a key one that comes to mind. There's many institutions that collaborate towards that effort. It's a top issue for businesses in the community. So as a regional organization, as, you know, a collaborative structure, part of our job is to pull together these key institutions and resources to tackle things like this. So that's the couple of examples that I provided on the slide as to successes that we've had in regards to quality of place. But I'll also point out that this, this can be large-scale efforts, like bringing together every Erie County school district, participate in a business advisory council. That's pretty innovative. But it can also be just making sure the right information is out in the community. So we tracked over 45 speaking engagements of our staff or research that we provided to different community partners under this umbrella last year, and it's, again, what economic, demographic, statistics, do people need to make good, informed decisions in the region? And this is a similar point with, it's just mentioning that we're... And this is a similar point with, it's just mentioning that we're going to continue to grow this effort in particular in regards to workforce development with the collaborative organization, the Firelands Regional Partnership, and the city of Sandusky serves on that committee as well. So thank you for your partnership in that regard. Questions?
Thank you. Chris, your questions or comments?
Thank you for being here today. It can be very, very scary opening your own business. So it's a big risk to take, but it's very nice to have an organization like Academ in our area that will continue to help attract more entrepreneurs. So your organization's very needed.
We have been proud to partner with you for a lot of years now, through thick and thin. And it wasn't so long ago that Sandusky's economy was an anchor on Erie County and today it's an engine. And we're much happier having it be an engine. But we know that you are a good investment for us. You provide us with access to talent and connections far outside of Sandusky on a cost-effective basis. And that's been an important part of turning Sandusky around and providing jobs for our residents. And we know that what you say is only too true, and that is that if a job is created somewhere in Erie County, there's a pretty darn good shot somebody at Sandusky is going to fill that job. And we depend upon those jobs and those income taxes to be able to provide the services that we need to provide for our residents and our visitors and the people who work here live someplace else alike. So it's very important that the rest of Erie County thrive because without that, Sandusky can't thrive either. So happy to make that continued investment. Further questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We will turn now to a public hearing on a proposed zone map amendment for seven parcels on First Street. I understand that Mr. Horstman, you are going to be making that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Tom Horstman, Assistant Planner in the Planning Department. And I'm going to present about, on a rezoning application and give some context to the application that Mr. Wrangle and Mr. Waldeck and Mr. Zuloff had spoken about just a moment ago. So this is a rezoning application for these parcels. There are seven of them in total in two different properties along First Street. So they can see on the screen there, the two properties are outlined to give you an idea of which ones we're talking about. The application, this originally began in the November Board of Zoning Appeals meeting where an application was submitted for the parcels on the left side, the western end, to construct a ninety-six-hundred-foot, square-foot boat and vehicle storage facility. The staff recommended against that. The Board of Zoning Appeals tabled that application. This application was brought to the Planning Commission subsequently. So the current zoning is single-family residential, as you can see the tan color there. The rezoning application is for commercial recreation. So this gives you a look of what these properties look like from First Street. Both of the properties are surrounded by single-family residential on three sides. To the north across First Street is commercial recreation zoning. However, the current use of that CR zoning across the street is primarily residential. So essentially, these are surrounded by residential properties along First Street. To explain a little bit about why staff recommended against it to the Planning Commission, there are essentially four main points that staff had concerns about. The first was what I just mentioned, because these are surrounded primarily by residential zoning and across the street is a residential use in the CR district. And the two pieces of property are not contiguous with each other. Staff had concerns about this being an instance of spot zoning, Chairman Zuloff mentioned. We also were concerned about the impact that by-right development in a CR district would have around the surrounding properties. Mr. Wrangle did mention some of the uses in his earlier remarks in the CR district. But also, I did want to note that commercial recreation also allows for uses in business, general business districts, roadside business districts. So that opens it up to a little bit more things like automotive repair shops and things like that nature, of that nature. So whether the residents are renters or homeowners, we had concerns about the impact that that would have on our residents in that area. The third point was our comprehensive plan that we have that calls for residential stabilization and infill. Both this plan and our previous plan had looked at this area after much discussion, public input as a target area for residential infill and stabilization. So because our plan calls for that, staff believed we should recommend that that should be what we continue to zone this land as. And fourth, we recognize that there has not been a lot of development in this land. And I think that's probably the case for the city of Sandusky over the last half-century as a whole. Things have been changing in that regard. For example, this First Street corridor has been targeted as a prime corridor in our bicentennial plan. And with that comes the Sandusky Bay Pathway will be running through here, which will be a large public investment in this area that hasn't seen, it's sort of been disconnected over the past decades. So I think that will do a lot to help that. And we've seen similar pathways across the country really help out development in areas that they go through. The residential tax abatement policy that the city recently adopted too could help spur that. So we recognize this area has been challenged, but with these new tools that we've been putting in place, staff believe that in conjunction with the priorities laid out in our bicentennial plan, that we, you know, thought that this should be in line with what we had planned for and what we had called for in terms of it being residential. So that being said, as Mr. Zuloff had mentioned, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of the rezoning in a five-to-one vote. Staff's recommendation then was to not approve it, to recommend against approval for the reasons I just mentioned. And staff's recommendation does remain the same despite the Planning Commission's approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Here's, we're going to proceed in this manner. Any of you wish to ask any questions of Mr. Horstman now or make any comments, feel free to do so. I'm going to give Mr. Wrangle, Mr. Waldeck an opportunity to respond to anything new, understanding that all of their previous comments are part of this hearing and part of this record. And then we'll give anyone else a chance to speak who's present because this is a public hearing. So commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Horstman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Could you, could you go back over the, well, we have the Sandusky Bay Pathway. Let me start there. You said that this area is part and parcel to having the pathway come through there or have a substantial use for the Sandusky Bay Pathway. And that is slated to come sometime in the future, two, three, four, five years away. Can you describe the use, how that would fit into this area? And then I guess give me an idea how that fits into the residential as well?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President. So the pathway represents a large public investment of this corridor. So what staff, when we look at our staff recommendations and the comprehensive plan, it's sometimes difficult because we have to really think long-term about the best use of the land and the property, which can seem far ways away in terms of things that we're thinking about. We want to think comprehensively about the whole neighborhood, the whole city. And so as we're looking at this land, in the past, there has not been viable development here, as we all have seen and recognized. The pathway was an example of a new investment in this area that connects it in ways that it hasn't been before, particularly with the proximity to the water, but its current disconnect with the water. We think the pathway will help make those connections as well as to land, you know, to Cedar Point, which is really in close proximity to this as well. So that's just sort of one investment that the city's been making in this area that will be different from what it's been in decades past.
I don't mean to stop you, but I mean physically, how do you envision it going through this area and having some impact on what could be a potential zoning change physically? Where do you see?
Through you, Mr. President. So do you mean like where the pathway will be running? It'll be running along First Street. So the First Street is the, obviously, the street that's right to the north of both of these parcels. So what it'll do is it'll provide a, just being in close proximity to it, and as we've seen in other cities across the country, that development does often spur from these types of investments when you make a trail, a pathway to connect other parts of the city, offer a nice recreational amenity. And it'll be within close proximity to this residential land that, like I said, hasn't seen much development in the past. But so through you, Mr. President, to enter the commissioner's question?
I think what Commissioner Lockhart was asking is physically, where is it? I think it's planned it's going to be on the north side of the street.
Yes.
I think we own an easement or the property there. And so that's a pretty easy thing for us to do. And that's where the pathway is planned, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Additional, or something else?
I think he was finishing the other part of the residential.
I'm finished.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Chairman, the impact, your concerns, what are your, what are they? What are the impacts that concern you?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. The impact that changing the zoning would mean that there'd be a lot more development that could happen here by rights, so by creating that zoning. So that's both commercial recreation, but then also our code allows for business uses. So one that comes to mind is automotive shops and repair shops. So heavier uses that because of the close proximity and the immediate surrounding residential housing in neighborhoods, we think that because changing that, allowing for that type of development by right, you know, just could negatively impact the surrounding neighborhoods and just their livelihood and their property and just their quality of life.
Quality of life, that their quality of life suffers, is that what you're saying?
Well, so we're, that's through you, Mr. President, you know, the point of zoning is to make sure that compatible uses are, uses that are allowed in certain districts to make sure they're compatible. And so we think because it's single-family, you know, there's, we want to make sure that that is, everything that goes there is conducive to the surrounding, surrounding people.
Mr. Whipster, you had a point.
Through the commission president, I just wanted to add on something that Tom said, excuse me. In addition to the pathway investment, there's also another significant infrastructure investment being made in this neighborhood, which is the construction of a new elementary school for Sandusky City Schools, less than a mile from this site. And obviously, in the building Better Dreams planning process through the Sandusky City Schools, they heard loud and clear that residents wanted to stay as closely as possible to a neighborhood school strategy and are making, you know, a significant investment that is not far from here that we believe will create not only increased housing demand for the existing housing stock in that general side of town, but also in the vacant land there. So between the pathway, which provides a recreational improvement, the school project is in a near enough proximity to this that we think both those things in combined will change the long-term trajectory of this neighborhood and surrounding area.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just to be clear, you're suggesting then that these properties are likely to be used for residential as these, because that's what the argument is, that you can't sell them and for use. So you are saying that this is, we're doing things that are going to make that happen?
Yes. Through you, Mr. President, I think the current investments and the policies that this commission over the past few years has enacted, we think allows for this residential zoned property, that we think it's properly zoned. And despite lack of investment in previous decades, like we've seen in other parts of the city, we think the policies we've been creating will be of help to spur that and that we think that this zoning is conducive to development as is.
Just one last question. You can go first. Do I jump in?
The, you said the Planning Commission voted five. Is that right?
Through you, Mr. President, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. And do you have any indication as to why they did that?
I believe the commission voted that way. I don't have a specific sense of a particular point that was made and perhaps our Planning Commission Chair will maybe speak to that. But I think the lack of development in this area was something that had come up from commissioners at the meeting. And so I think there was a desire to try to spur something to happen. And our argument was that we're doing that and that'll take time, but that we're looking again for the long-term viability and what the best long-term policy is for this particular neighborhood.
That was the question I was going to ask. In terms of deciding what to do with this, the Planning Commission exists to make these plans for us. And notwithstanding, they apparently don't agree with your assessment of the things that are going to happen, even though personally I think that I do. And I'm having trouble, I think Mr. Waddington's on the Planning Commission. He was one of the five that voted for this. Perhaps you could add some insight into the Planning Commission's thinking. They're not here to talk to us. So what's the counterpoint to what's been put forth up to now?
I think Mr. Zuloff was about to speak.
He also voted, he voted no.
Commissioner.
That's not the balance I'm looking for.
Mr. Whipster.
Through the commission president, to the commission, I just want to say that in spite of that five-one vote, I've had at least two planning commissioners who voted in the affirmative in that five-one vote reach out and say that they have reservations about their vote and would, and with new information, would potentially consider changing that vote. So that doesn't relitigate that issue. But I do know it was one of the, it was a complicated vote and it's a complicated issue in that it seems to be an evolving process.
Waddington, did you have something you wanted to add at this point? I saw your hand up, I think.
Yeah, I had a written comment that I voted in favor of the change from our one single-family residential to see our commercial recreation and with the Planning Commission Board. But looking into this further, I reexamined my vote. The planned investments in the Sandusky Way Pathway and the private investments along the city's bicentennial vision and comprehensive plan as it relates to this area, I've since changed my mind since that vote occurred. At that time, when we had discussion at the Planning Commission table, it was that the houses were there over fifty years, there was no infill, nothing was happening. And we thought, that was the conversation, maybe, and Mr. Zuloff can clarify better for me. But the conversation was that nothing's happening there. Let's change this and possibly see if we can re-energize it. But then I got thinking about the pathway and other things on First Street that's going on now, and I've since changed my mind. I'm one of the two that you probably talked to.
Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, maybe I can help clarify some of this. So just because I voted against it and others voted for it doesn't mean that I was black and white against it. I was real close, and I think some of the other commissioners were too. You know, it's, we're excited that people want to do something here. We appreciate the efforts and the investment that the applicant wants to make. I think there's a better way to do it. And in principle, I just have a lot of trouble with spot zoning. It just kind of ties your hands. We sort of glossed over something. This went to BZA. This is not the only way to get this done. It went to BZA, Border Zoning Appeals. And what would that have been? What was the application? Was that for variance or? So it could have been a variance, right? Not changing the underlying zoning, but a variance is more of a temporary measure, even though you're building something, right? So that application didn't go forward. So going for a zoning change was really Plan B. And so probably unbalanced in this world, not the best way to get it done. Even if, even if the development is a good idea, and I might say it is one way or another, but even if it is a good idea, it's probably better to, to do it more comprehensively and holistically from a long-term planner's perspective rather than the spot zoning that you, that you hear about, that leaving everything around it residential. Well, you're, if you do something commercial, you're making it less likely for the adjoining properties to be developed for residential use, right? So it's probably not the best way to do it. And I spoke for that at the meetings. I can even speak to some of the advantages of approving this, and that would be that it gets something done. It adds to the tax base, gets some activity there. It's not like it's harming a bunch of, an active vital neighborhood. There are some residential uses there. And those residents, whether they're tenants or owners, have rights and certainly have an interest in maintaining their life, their quality of life. And just because they're tenants doesn't mean that, that doesn't invalidate their, their right to protection under zoning laws. So I can see both sides of it and I can speak to both the pros and cons of this. So I can see both sides of it, and I can speak to both the pros and cons of this. But my vote against it was, I also said we could do plan unit development, we can review the comprehensive plan, which we're calling the bicentennial plan. So on balance, I think that, also, let me add, that I might have, I think, I don't know whether it would have influenced the vote, but we knew nothing about prospective development across the street. I still know, have no idea what the nature of that is. We haven't seen any site plan, haven't seen anything. So I think it would be better to make this decision in the context of that. So I don't want to be the, I don't think it's a good idea for public to eliminate an owner's use of their land, economic benefit of their land because of zoning, but I don't think that's what we're doing. We could be at the cost, we could be at the moment where this, this area is rising in value, I think, because of the economic vitality of the area and the interest in Sandusky as a great place to live and a great place to vacation. We could be at the moment where it, it could become viable for many other uses, including residential or recreational or who knows what. So I don't think the argument that it hasn't been viable under residential zoning for the past 50 years is any proof that, it's sort of like some cost ancient history, the question is going forward, what's likely to happen? And that's what we should focus on. And I totally understand Mr. Waddington's comments, and I think it's not unreasonable to say, to recognize how this one's a tricky, a tricky question.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Mr. Wrangle and Mr. Wallock, is there anything that you would like to add? And if there is anyone else present who wishes to speak to this issue, after these gentlemen speak, I'll give you a chance.
There's a lot to unpack from these comments that have just been made. First, as to looking at, Mr. Zuloff kept referring to spot zoning. I've been doing real estate litigation for 40 years. It's not spot zoning. Spot zoning by definition is a zoning that's surrounded on four sides by different zoning. For example, spot zoning is the Dairy Queen on the corner of Fifth and Causeway, because it's surrounded on four sides by different zoning. That's spot zoning. This is not spot zoning. This is surrounded on three sides by residential and on the fourth side by commercial recreational on the north side of Fifth Street. So it's not technically, legally, spot zoning. It looks like spot zoning because it's sitting on a corner, okay? Now, as far as whether this property is going to be subject to more development in the future because of investment that the city's going to make on a pathway on the north side of First Street, again, no statistics on that. All we have to look at is what's happened in the last 50 years. By simply putting in a pathway doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be more demand for residential housing in an area than in the last 50 years, there's been no residential housing built. The only development along First Street, and everyone has to agree, that First Street is much, much different than Second or Third or Fourth Street. First Street is a, is a pathway to Cedar Point, and in the summertime, it's a high-traffic street. And because of that, you have higher risk, which means less safety to children. I challenge any of you to tell me if they've ever seen children playing in the front yards of any house along First Street from Sycamore Line to Cedar Point, the entrance to Cedar Point in the summertime. They just don't do it. It's not a safe, safe place to play with all the traffic. Likewise, you have, I'm sure this commission has heard numerous complaints of noise from Lyman Harbor and other developments along that area in the summertime. Late music being played and people complaining in the, in the boathouses, in the commercial recreational zoning on the north side of First Street about all the noise they're getting from Lyman Harbor. That, again, is not conducive to a residential neighborhood. People entering from First Street, if you have a house, there's a few houses along there, which I said my family built 75 years ago, very difficult for them to back on the First Street and get into the traffic in the summertime. Very dangerous, as a matter of fact, because that's just the entrance there. So the likelihood of residential houses being built along First Street is pretty slim. We've had that property for sale for over 10 years, and the only, only inquiries we ever received were for commercial and business-type development. Never once have I had somebody contact me and say, I'd like to build a $200,000 house on that property. It doesn't fit in with the, first of all, the size of the lot, you'd have to have eight houses built there, four on First Street and four on Second Street, highly unlikely. And with four of them opening with their driveways on the First Street, again, it's a safety concern. All these things I mentioned because those are the things that have to be considered by this commission, had to be considered by the Planning Commission, and have to be considered by a court of law as to whether there is a hardship that prevents, the exact term is, general hardship prevails through the district that dictates a zoning change. Has there been any real estate development in that area in the last 50 years? Commercial. There's been, what's directly to the, to the west of Mr. Wallock's properties that he recently tore down houses? Commercial. What lies, what lies further down the road? Commercial. It's all commercial along First Street. No new houses. And to speculate that some point in the future, we're going to have residential houses along First Street because of a development of a pathway where people are going to transit from one end to the other end of First Street, I don't see how that's going to be conducive to a neighborhood with that kind of high traffic. Unless there's some plan that I don't know about that plans on lowering the traffic count on First Street or slowing down traffic, which I did hear at one point, the Planning Department mentioned, that they had plans for bumpouts and other things to take care of the traffic, to adjust the traffic speed and flow. And someone on the Planning Commission mentioned, gee, I wonder how Cedar Point would feel about that, slowing down the traffic to their entrance. So if we put all these things together, it's, it's highly unlikely that there's going to be any development there. And to suggest that, that this issue should be tabled a few more months, I guarantee you, I won't have a buyer for that property. I've already put them off many months. It was supposed to close back in December. Three, four months from now, there won't be a buyer there. We'll be, it'll be back on the market again, and we'll be trying to sell it again, and we'll be getting the same kind of inquiries we always get. They either want to put in a drive-through, or they want to put in a boat repair or boat storage. We have boat storage to the north on First Street with a boat, a marina and boat storage. We have boat storage further, further down on First Street on the north. And yet, this, this Planning Commission and the, and the city are going to suggest perhaps that that's not appropriate for the south side of First Street? I could see where you'd make that argument for the second street or third street or fourth street, because you could at least make an argument that it's a quiet neighborhood area where there's low traffic, kids can play in the street if they want and not, not risk their safety. This is not First Street, I'm sorry. There's so many other things that were brought up, I don't think I can address all of them. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try and answer them.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Wrangle, he's invited you to ask questions if you have them. Mr. Heyberger, while commissioners are thinking about that, could you clarify procedurally where we are? If I understand it correctly, what we have is a request for rezoning, which would be, which is a contingency to the sale from Mr. Wrangle to his buyer, but then there is no guarantee, enforceable guarantee that the city or anyone else has as to what's going to go there? Is that more or less correct?
That's correct. Please, Mr. President and the rest of the commission, once this is changed, any of those uses that will commonly come under the CR zoning effect can take place. Angie and Tom can probably talk to whatever those might be. But any use, I think Tom touched that car repair could go there, any of those things once it's been rezoned would be principally permitted use and wouldn't need any further legislative action.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heyberger. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Wrangle?
I think he had something else he wanted to say.
If I can address it. Hold on a second. I'm inviting the commissioners first because you asked for questions, and I want to make sure they have that chance.
I don't have a question of him, I have a question of Trevor when we get to it. It's no rush.
Ms. White.
Yes, I do have a question. Mr. Wrangle, is there any other place that you would consider putting what it is that you want to put versus?
That's a good question. That was, so was raised at the, at the Planning Commission level. Well, unfortunately, as I, as I pointed out to them, this is the only block of eight lots that we have as a block. The next largest we have is six. And the six, we have a couple of those, and those lie on the south side of Second Street, which is even, in my opinion, more residential than this would be. So as, as you proceed back from First Street, first of all, we don't have as large a block of property except on First Street there. And as you proceed back, I, there was a lot of discussion in the Planning Commission, and Mr. Zuloff can confirm this, and Mr. Waddington, about whether these type of storage-type things would be more appropriate on a second or the street or third street where it's quieter. In my opinion, it could go either way, because you could also make an argument that when it's quieter, it should be more of a residential neighborhood than First Street. So personally, I'm not, I don't come down either way on that, only from a practical standpoint, this particular buyer wanted eight lots, and we don't have eight lots anywhere else. So from a practical standpoint, we can't put this anywhere than where they want it on the corner there. But what, what to be done with stuff on Second Street or Third Street or Fourth Street? Should it, should it be something that should be houses, or should it be something that should be some sort of storage that would be more conducive to?
What is your buyer proposing to put there?
They just simply want some private storage. They don't even want, it's not even going to be commercial. But the problem is, when we went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they were of the opinion that it was too big a block of property to qualify for a variance. So they sent it over Planning Commission on the argument that this was more appropriate for the Planning Commission to decide whether it should be a zoning change or not, because they didn't think, and I agree with them. I don't think this is something that's appropriate for a variance because of the size. Now, whether the city commission can approve a variance for that size, I don't know. I've never looked into that. But as far as what the authority of the Planning Commission as opposed to the border zoning appeals, I tend to side with the opinion of the border zoning appeals that it should have been more appropriately in the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions to Mr. Wrangle?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Mr. Wrangle, I appreciate the definition on spot zoning, but a question to you, looking at those two blocks, you did mention that some of your inquiries were about a drive-through. So what do you feel about still having to the east and west of your property blocks being R1? So I don't, forgive me.
East and, east and west?
I went through the packet, and I went through both Planning Commission meetings and read through the discussions, but I don't know who owns the property next to your blocks.
Well, for example, on this block of eight, directly south, on the other side of Second Street, we own three lots on the corner. On the southeast corner of Second and Wildman, we own, I don't know, six, eight, but I think there's one lot, somebody else owns in between there. And on the, on the northeast corner of Second and Wildman, we have, I don't know, maybe five lots with, I think, one lot in between, so we have four, and then somebody else, and then we have one or two more. So it's not contiguous block of eight. I think it's the most, it's four or five. But we have all four corners there.
I guess my question is if, what are we to do with the properties right next to those if we were to change them?
Well.
And you still have R1, so there's going to be a, like a deterrent for anyone to purchase those properties or, or develop on those properties next to it. If, so in the sense of there, I agree with Mr. Zuloff in the sense that he said there's a good argument for both sides of it. So, you know, understanding that if we did change the zoning, what is that going to do? In a sense, it is spot zoning.
The only inquiries, I can tell you this, the only inquiries we've had for properties on the south, the southwest and the southeast corners of Second and Wildman have been people looking for one and two lots to build a garage that they, obviously, either want to put a car or a boat or something in. It seems to be, the inquiries that we've had have always been, people are looking for one or two lots, they're just looking for a personal storage garage of some sort. Not allowed under residential zoning. You have to have, you have to have an occupied residence attached to it. So those are out of the question. Those are the inquiries, the only inquiries we heard. I have never, ever, in the last 10 years, had one person contact me saying they want to buy a lot or a group of lots to build a house in that area.
Mr. Lockhart.
You said that this is likely to be for private use?
It is, yeah. It's not going to be commercial. But it has to have a commercial zoning because it's not going to be attached to a residence.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Who owns this property here? I assume this is yours. Who owns the property going to the west?
Where are we at here? We are here. Those are vacant lots, I believe owned by Cedar Point.
It's okay. Does anyone actually know?
Some of them, some of them may be owned by these houses on First Street.
I accept your guess, but does anybody actually?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Mr. Wallock is indicating that he owns them.
Okay.
There you are. There's your answer.
Any other questions to Mr. Wrangle? Mr. Wallock, any response?
Sure. I own the eight lots that are to the west of the western portion that Mr. Wrangle and his family own. I own the nine or 10 of the 11 houses that are between the two blocks. I have been, as I said, reluctant to say anything about the north side of First Street because I have two applications that are in front of federal agencies. And I do not want to pigeonhole those people that work there if I come out with a big plan and then they come back and say, well, Mr. Wallock, you don't have permission yet from our agency to do that. And so that's why I haven't made public the plan of what we, what we want to do. Obviously, however, though, if you've driven down First Street in the last year, you've seen the trees change, you've seen as of a week and a half ago, 1,200 loads of soil delivered to that property. We're starting to make an investment there. We, we did buy the, or I bought the eight lots to the south and cleared out two houses and a garage that I thought were detrimental to a large development going on across the street. And even if it's less taxes for a year or two because of two houses that should have been torn down, I think the bigger picture is that we have an opportunity to do something dramatic on the north side. Currently, the north side, from a development standpoint, could be, or is, commercial, and we can fill it full of boat, or boat storage facilities from one end to the other, and you'll have no view. By going residential, we think it's a higher and better use for that property. We know that, or part of our decision to purchase the property and to get involved with the property is because of efforts of this commission and efforts of Cedar Point. And the potential of having that bike pathway or the walking path on the north side of First Street. We can see that somebody can say, you're in between the sports complex and you're in between a vibrant downtown Sandusky, and I want to live there. And so that's our, our hope is for in the future, being able to come to Planning Commission and Mr. Zuloff and the members of that commission and show them a full-blown plan for a residential development. Part of what this commission has done that makes that even more attractive is the 75% tax abatement that you authorized for residential development. Whether we do it or Whether we do it or somebody else does it, that's a great and wonderful opportunity for the Sandusky community to build new housing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I'm able to.
Okay, so, just as a reminder, normally when people come in front of us at a hearing, they're not subject to cross-examination, but if they offer an opportunity to answer, to ask questions, then we let them. I didn't mean to put a bullseye on your back.
It's why I wear mint-flavored insoles.
But I want to make sure that we understand that's not a precedent. So, Mr. Treacher, there's questions at Mr. Wallock's invitation. Mr. Walker.
Let me just go around real quick. You own the lots that are directly adjacent to, well, you kind of own most of the property around the property that we're discussing changing the zoning for, right?
I own the eight lots to the west of the western parcel, and I own 10 houses in between the two parcels.
Right. And so, across the street, essentially, you're proposing some type of residential development in the future?
That's correct.
How many units, if, you know, would you say would be there?
I can't even answer that until the Ohio EPA allows me the opportunity to present them with an application that takes it from industrial-commercial to restricted-residential.
Okay. And there were about, just throwing out, 100 trees over there that you cut down?
There were more than that.
More than 100, so 200 trees? Okay. And just west of this, just west of this, you built a new office facility, well, probably 30 seconds away.
I owned that facility for the last 25 years. It was a commercial building, and we made the corporate decision to move out of the downtown area and consolidate all our operations into one facility, and it works for us. Very fortunate to be there.
Additional questions for Mr. Wallock? Thank you, Mr. Wallock. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak during this hearing? Then the-
Mr. President, I would like to add one little point that you respond to. I was trying to be understated before. We went a little rhetorical, so, I'd say that whether it's a legal definition or not, and I don't know if there's a universal legal definition of spot zoning, but it has the characteristics of same, and I'm sure that we have two zoning, or planning professionals here that could maybe clarify what is commonly known as a spot zoning. So, nevertheless, it does have those characteristics, whether it meets a legal definition or not, and I'm not sure there isn't, I'm unconvinced that there's a single legal definition of same. I would also say that I would be more comfortable, I'm not saying I would vote for it, but I, as a Planning Commissioner, I'd be more comfortable if the entire area was being rezoned commercial, which, by the way, I understand would still allow single and two-family if it was owned commercial, and would be defensible to also have multifamily there. It's the problem, and, look, we've got commercial here, we've got multifamily commercial here. Over here, Cedar Point's been gradually developing. So, it's sort of surrounded, there's pressure for commercial use here, and the traffic cries for it. And then, but then, here we go, now we know we're looking at residential across the street. So, okay, I made the point about spot zoning, that it's a red herring. It has the characteristics of it one way or another. The only other point I'd make is, the point that's been argued over and over again is that nothing has happened for 50 years. I think the point has to be made that the same owner, the applicant, has been the owner that owned it, so that nothing has happened so far over the last decades. It's not a very strong argument when you own the property, because it's kind of your decision. You could argue that it wasn't economically possible, and that might be true, but I think we have to consider that. In any event-
I think you've made that point, Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, okay, I can-
You said a little bit-
No, no, I'm sorry.
We're going to be meeting, so maybe we should be proposing zoning, rezoning the whole area, is what I'm going to-
All right, thank you. All right. That's, I think we'll call it there on the public comments. But we do have, I need some direction from the commission, because we've got two pieces of legislation in the alternative, and I'd like to get some direction in terms of what the will is.
Trevor, try and get your touch on it.
Oh, yes, Mr. Faber.
I mean, just typically, we would close a public hearing and then address those when we get to it in the agenda.
Okay. That's fine, just public hearing is closed.
But yeah, when we do get there, though, I agree with you, we do need to at least talk about that.
Well, that was a very polite chastisement, but I'll accept it. The hearing is closed. And now, we will have a hearing on the 2019 budget. Mr. Soloway?
Thank you. I will open up some brief comments, and then I'll turn over Director of City Manager, Whoopsir, and obviously, which is very important, to open up to the public some comments as well. Basically, we're here to talk about budgeting. What is budgeting? Budgeting is basically creating a plan to spend the money you have. It's no different than what we do at home on a daily basis. We have endless demands for spending, and we have limited resources. So, this budget plan is based on estimated incomes and revenues that we receive. It's also used as a tool for decision-making. So, the main question is, how do we prioritize our spending? Well, the legislative body, the City Commission, outlines the overall goals and objectives. And they did that in 2016, when unanimously passed the Bicentennial and Strategic Vision Plan. That is basically used as a blueprint for setting our budget priorities every year. So, just to remind the commission and the public, the five main priorities of the Strategic Vision Plan involve making Sandusky a vibrant, livable, connected destination and celebrated city. We believe our budget presented here tonight addresses all five main priorities of that plan. Now, just a few brief comments from me about the general fund. Tonight, we are presenting a balanced general fund, well, with the anticipation that we'll be adding a modest amount to the balance at year-end. We're estimating our general fund balance to be at or about 20%, which is in our target range. We are estimating general fund revenues to come in at $24.8 million, which is about a 6% increase from last year. We're also anticipating general fund expenses to be at or about the same level at $24.8. The overall plan is to present this budget to the Finance Committee at their next meeting on March 22nd, just to discuss it with them and present it to them to see if there's any other comments or questions they may have. But other than that, we believe we're presenting a balanced budget tonight that meets the goals and objectives of the Strategic Vision Plan that was adopted by this commission. Those are really my comments, and then I'll turn over the other two other things, and then we'll-
Mr. Whoopsir, leave it.
No, I would just say, I think through the commission and on behalf of the Finance Department, they've done a really good job in this budgeting process. And the reality is, this is not any significant or material changes as far as staffing or programming from last year. There's some modest things we did, but ultimately, it's just continued implementation of the Bicentennial Vision Plan. Most of the programs that have existed will continue to exist. There's very modest staffing changes. I think the only actual new position here is one that will work on stormwater and landscaping issues, and is funded kind of creatively through the Public Works Department. But other than that, as far as, and it's some enterprise-funded positions, this is a budget that just allows us to continue to do the important work of the last several years.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Soloway or Mr. Whoopsir?
Mr. Chair, is this a hearing?
This is a hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. I'm looking at the revenue projections, and I just put some meat on the bones of, we're projecting an income tax increase of 4.1%, and just where that's coming from. And the reason it strikes me is because 4.1% is twice, almost, well, not quite, one and three-quarters times what it increased this year. With the economy slowing, I'm just wondering what your crystal ball came up with that said we're going to jump that high? Because it was, we've not been at 4% increase in income tax revenue as long as I can remember.
Sure. Part of the reason for that is, we do look at the historical data and the trends, which have been indicating about 2% to 3% increase. In addition to that, we're well aware there is a significant amount of investment that is taking place this year with construction of buildings, and many, much construction jobs that will be contributing to the income taxes. So, we feel that building in an extra 1% should accommodate for the growth in the construction projects that are occurring this year into 2019.
Okay. We're looking then at, that totals $475,000. How much is that in actual salaries? Several million is what we're looking at?
Yeah, it's hard to pinpoint that down, but based on what we think the overall, there's over $300 million worth of projects going on, that's going to be contributing to the tax base as far as the jobs over 2019. Schools, construction, rebuilding, our projects, so.
The, I'm not as sure as you are, the numbers don't add for me. The same with the admissions tax. You're projecting a 10.8% increase in change in admissions tax, which has actually gone down the last two years. So, I mean, you're going from minus 2, minus 2 to 10.8. What's going to happen with gas?
We ran sort of our scenarios by Cedar Fair to make sure, you know, last year was sort of a down year as far as the admission goes, but we think our 2019 will be a much better year and will produce better results for us. We're kind of, we agree that the number last year obviously went down, but we feel that there's enough positive things going on there that'll contribute to the increase in 2019. And we're going to monitor that throughout the year, that on both income taxes and admission taxes, if those revenues don't come in as projected, we'll be able to scale back some different things and make sure we don't spend more than we bring in.
What are we drawing rental income? That's also a big jump, 25%? What does that encompass, that we're going to get?
The primary revenue source for that is the submerged land lease that we get from the state of Ohio, from ODNR.
It's going up, is that it? It's been, additionally, in helping that, a couple of, I've only done the big ones, actually, so. Revenues from individual departments, looking at a 27% increase in police department revenues. What's that coming from, since it's generally, back the last, it's been, they've been going, in fact, revenues in general for like, most of the departments are going down year to year? And we're projecting increases that are significant, like 10%.
A lot of the police revenues will be corresponding to the court increases, because a lot of the fine money goes credited to the police department. So, we're anticipating, obviously, the court costs will go up, that the fines that the police department get credited for will also go up. In addition to that, there's also a lot of jobs that the police department is reimbursed for. The chief could probably give some examples, but there's a significant amount of money, like the Sandusky libraries, Sandusky City schools, will reimburse us for services that we provide. So, that kind of makes up the two, those are probably the two main increase, revenue sources for the police department. And I know what the meaning is for courts, they're also looking at revising their fee structure this year. So, we've built a modest increase into their numbers every year. And we've had a really good relationship with clerk of courts as far as monitoring the courts to make sure that they break even as well. We feel that that's been working better.
Last one, a couple of significance, too. Jackson Street parking, a $24,000 increase in community developed Jackson Street parking. Where, what's, where's that coming from?
That's probably more of just a typo, that we used to get a little bit of money from the parking machine that was there. The majority of the revenue that is in community development is related to the, was it the vacant and abandoned building program, I believe? Where a portion of that goes to the general fund. But it also used to get, we also used to credit some of the money that was coming from the parking meter there, but since, obviously, the parking meter is not there this year, that's probably more of a typo on my part.
Okay, so, we're not going to get that money?
No, now the machine's gone. It basically should say community development.
Oh.
Jackson Street parking, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, community develop, oh, okay, there, that's, there, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Additional questions, commissioners? I went through a lengthy process with Mr. Soloway and Mr. Whoopsir in getting some of my questions answered. And would encourage any of you to spend as much time with them as you like to, you know, get additional details.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd give me a raise, I'd be happy to spend more time than I already spend on this. This is 282 pages of stuff.
Yes, I could. But only the voters can do that. All right. If there are no further questions by the commission, it's a public hearing. And anyone wishing to address the commission on the budget, please step to the microphone, give us your thoughts. And otherwise, I'm going to call this hearing closed. Then we will turn to the Communications Commissioners. We have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept?
No.
Second discussion. Objection, the motion to be approved, and hearing objection, motion is approved. Commissioners, we have our consent agenda items. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have the regular agenda? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to respect the consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Then a motion, and second discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kresser, would you please present the consent agenda items?
Yes, Mr. President.
Glad Miss Lloyd is here.
Item A on the consent agenda is approval of codified ordinances for calendar year 2018. Item B is the purchase of body armor vests for the police department. Item C is a purchase and sale agreement for a vacant property located at 533 Taylor Street. Item D is a transportation services agreement for the Sandusky Transit System with the Sandusky City Schools. And item E is an amendment to Chapter 1161 Landmark Preservation, that is a second for you.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda items now for real this time, what is your pleasure? Mr. Poole, I think you were about to make that motion.
Which motion was that? Yeah, I did. I thought I did.
We'll make the record note that he has already made the motions.
Okay.
Didn't I?
I mean, we did it out of order, but I-
Okay.
There's been a motion, and a second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. And now, on the ordinances, please.
Mr. Brady? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Willie?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. Those ordinances are adopted. Mrs. Kresser, would you present item number one, please?
Item number one, A, is the first reading of an ordinance amending the official zone map of the City of Sandusky to rezone seven parcels from R140, single-family residential district, to be our commercial recreation district.
Commissioners, having heard that communication, how do you wish to-
Commissioner President, before we have-
Yes, Mr. Faber.
I think this is where we should take up.
If we can pause here to do that, then that's fine. All right. So, I need some direction from the commission. So, we've got two pieces of legislation. One essentially affirms the decision of the Planning Commission, and the second one would upend that, if you will. I need to know what it is that we want to do, so we can pick the right piece of legislation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lockhart.
I think we should be simply following, first off, we have the Planning Commission, they're focused, and they've already vetted this for us. And so, we've heard Mr. Rangel and Mr. Wallock. So, I guess at this point, unless we're considering changing the entire area into a commercial district or not, I think we should look at the legislation that's before us. Which would be approved or denied?
And any other opinions? No, which one do you want to?
The first, the first one.
The first, okay. Other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I'm not sure.
So I'm asking for the commission's direction in terms of whether we should first vote on A or B. Mr. Heyberg?
Just maybe I should do a little crash course on what we got going on here.
Please.
You have two options here. This is a little different than what we typically deal with. A is, you have to choose A or B. A is to approve the planning commission's recommendation that would need four votes to pass that. B is to disapprove planning commission's decision, and under our codified ordinances, we would need six votes to approve that, to approve that disapproval.
Okay. Ms. Twine, I'd like to speak.
No.
May I answer your question?
Yes.
Well, I was just asking for some input first. I find this to be a very difficult decision. This, as Mr. Zuloff indicated, is right on the knife's edge in terms of what I think the right outcome is. I'm troubled by the fact that we are talking about either approving or disapproving a decision by the planning commission when the planning commission didn't have all the information that we now have in front of us. That seems an odd way to proceed. I understand the argument that that land has been in a static condition for a very long period of time, and that certainly is right. But we're about to see an enormous sea change in the investment on that property if the, if the, if the development to the north of First Street proceeds, and obviously, there's been an enormous amount of money invested in that already. That's quite evident as you drive by it. We do need new housing in the city. That helps pay for our city schools, and to the extent that those folks are working, actively employed, that pays income taxes, that allows us to provide the services that we need to provide for all the folks who live here and visit here. So this is not an easy decision, and I have only the highest regard for both the gentlemen who find themselves on opposite sides of this particular piece of legislation. So it is difficult, but I would like to better understand the thoughts of the planning commission with this additional information and receive their recommendation in terms of how it is that we should proceed. So for my part, I would opt for B, but that's just my thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. White.
In looking at all the information and knowing that the planning commission didn't have everything in front of them, also hearing that some of them are wanting to change their mind, I think it's really important that we do have development on First Street, but I think it's also very important that we proceed cautiously. So I don't want to turn back four or five years from now and say maybe we shouldn't have, I know technically it's not spot zoning, but there's a feel of spot zoning by looking at the map. And if cautiously means that in the future that we do full blocks of commercial zoning, I would feel a lot more comfortable with that. So where we're at right now, I'm more comfortable leaning towards B.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
I'm not prepared to speculate one way or another about what the planning commission might do or didn't do because they didn't, don't think they had enough information. Likewise, whether or not it's going to sell residential or not sell residential, those arguments kind of wake each other, they cancel each other out. We haven't built five new houses in Sandusky in the last five years. So the suggestion that there's no residential going on any segment of First Street isn't an argument that I suggest means anything. Circumstances are, people aren't building things here at all. Is it possible we just send this back to planning commission? I'm still troubled, well, not troubled, I, I, I'm getting a sense that the planning commission does not necessarily still agree three years later with the five-year plan. I mean, they voted against it. Whether they knew something was going across the street or not, they didn't know what the plan was, and they rejected what was presented to them by the, by the staff. And moving forward with this, if you're suggesting that they've, you know, and they came to you on the side afterwards, I don't, I don't give that much credence. So I would suggest if it's permissible you, we send it back to them to re-go over again. And so we know exactly what the planning commission said before I vote against them, in spite of what I may personally think about how this should be. I'm not on the planning commission, and we, they're charged with planning.
So are you on A or B?
I'm on neither of them at the moment. I suggest you table this, and planning commission can review it again and tell us what they actually think.
So, Mr. Heyberg, that's.
And then they'll tell us where we're going. Planning commission changes their mind, we end up on B.
Heyberg, is that a viable approach that Mr. Poole has outlined?
I would have, before I give you an answer, I would have a question for Ms. Byatt. So in order to achieve what they're, what they're looking at, I would think the easiest way to do that would be to do option B, disapprove it. Is there a timeframe when he can refile with planning commission? Like, is there like a year worth waiting period? I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
So through you, Mr. President, I don't think we have one stated in our code directly. It might just, there'd have to be a new, I believe there'd have to be a new request, but something different.
Okay. So if that's the case, then I would suggest do option B, take it, vote, disapprove it because it's now before us. The applicant could refile, and we would start the process all over again with the new information. I think that's the cleanest way to do it. Because I don't, I don't think there's a process to send it back. They've already voted.
If he says there's no process, there's no way you can do about it. But I would suggest that it's, I'm not supporting putting this candidate through, this gentleman through the process, a bigger process again. He's got to pay for it. It's just not, it's not, this is all on us. This is planning commission, voting as they did, and I suppose we'll just have to make a decision whether we're going to vote against the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman.
So whichever one you guys go with, I'll decide my yes or no, either one.
Let me get, so is there any, any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I understand Mr. Ringel's viewpoint. He has property, and he has someone that wants to develop his property. But I am going, I am supportive of option B. I don't like going against the planning commission because we put that group together for the purpose of vetting these types of things. So as it gets to us, then we have a somewhat of a clear pathway forward. We have some, some opposing viewpoints from, with the planning commission as well as our city staff. I tend to cringe when we look, we look back and say, well, this hasn't happened, that hasn't happened. I, I, I am excited about what's going on now. I look forward to some possibilities. And so because I'm always looking forward at the possibilities, I think we should support the city's perspective on this. There is no guarantee that we will have residential housing, new residential housing out there. But I do believe, given some of the things that have happened in the community, that we will have people looking for property to build residential housing. So that's my perspective on it. I am, I will vote for B.
Ms. Lockhart.
It's okay. The one thing that concerns me is there's a pending sale by Mr. Ringel. And so that would due to, there'd be some harm there by, potentially, there'd be some harm there by what we do. Second, we have an A and B ordinance, and they seem to be just the opposite of each other. I mean, we could achieve the same thing with voting on A, just as we could with B, and legally, if it's gone through the appellate process here or the appeals process, is that, is that right to the staff? Was it the board of zoning appeals that it went through?
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Lockhart. If you, if you vote on A, then the matter's, if you vote affirmatively on A, the matter's done and the zoning is approved.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So if we can vote to approve it or disapprove it, and if he so chooses to come back again and take another bite at the apple, I think he has some opportunity to do that in a different form. Am I right or wrong?
Yes and no. Like, if you shoot it down under B, he can go back to planning commission. However, if you vote yes on A, it's rezoned and that's it.
Oh, no? Okay. So I, I'm still in favor of A. Thank you.
All right. So I hear five Bs and an A. So, Mr. Heyberg, I think that I need to ask, the next step is to ask Mrs. Cresser to present item 1B, correct?
Unless someone wants to make a motion, that would be fine. I mean, B would be.
We have to have six folks.
To have six on B, but we can't get four on A. So, would someone care to make a motion?
May I ask a question first?
Yes.
This is so complicated. Okay, so A is stating if we vote affirmative, the zoning has changed.
Correct.
What if we vote on A and it does not pass?
That is not, that does not disapprove.
Is that on an option?
That doesn't disapprove it because in this case, it needs six votes to fail. So in a typical ordinance, if you're saying, if you get the majority, and if you don't, it fails, that doesn't apply in this case because it needs the affirmative six votes. That's why there's the two ordinances.
So I would request a motion to approve 1B.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve 1B under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion at second, further discussion.
Mr. Qu, yeah, I had a question for Mr. Heyberg. It's been so long now, I got to reorganize it in my head. I'm trying to figure out about our options. What is the purpose of the planning commission and ours with regard to use of land in an area?
I guess I'm not understanding the full question.
I'm trying, I'm trying to decide, since I can't, assume that I can't decide whether this can ever be sold as commercial, or the vision that the city has that it's going to be residential, and I don't know which one it's going to be. What impacts that have on the fact that it's already zoned residential?
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole. I would think that while we talk about spot zoning, I think the purpose of, whenever you're talking about these types of changes, the changes when you're taking a whole section and you're making little slices out, the purpose should be supported by a change in the, or should be supported by your comprehensive plan. That's the most realistic way. So sometimes it's okay in spot zoning, and sometimes it's not okay if that little change is the same as what your comprehensive plan says. In this case, both the old comprehensive plan, I think Mr. Horstman testified to this, that both the old comprehensive plan and the current one, this use is not related to, or is not in the scope of that comprehensive zone. So I think that's the reason why this is a little different.
Okay, let me suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, that I accept that this is not, not spot zoning. I accept the legal interpretation. That's fine. It's okay for us as a community through planning to say, we want this to be residential, even though it isn't going to be tomorrow necessarily.
Yes.
That's not an unreasonable thing for us to do.
And actually, that's the whole point of planning.
Because what we're balancing here is, nice residential is likely to go across the street, and we're balancing whether or not we believe that a drive-through, well, that commercial recreation things are the only thing that's going to go in. And so it's, so we're not, we're not being, okay. I understand what I want to know.
I don't think I helped you with that.
I understand what I want to know. I need to, I need to follow a line that takes me to a conclusion.
Welcome to Nick. I'll make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I guess, looking at this, the one thing that I see is, when we make choices on zoning in neighborhoods, you have to look at the impact that it has on the adjacent neighbors and the community itself. Everybody wants a strong residential neighborhood. I love it, and I concur with building strong neighborhoods. But when we look at this area, and I've looked at it prior to this, two years ago, looking at, I ordered traffic studies of that exact area, not for this purpose, but just to see what traffic counts were going into the gateway of Cedar Point. And you've got about 8,000 cars going eastbound and westbound. And so when you've got 8,000 cars and a potential expansion of Cedar Point and other businesses, then you're looking at, the future looks more commercial to me than anything. But, you know, in one instance, there may be one area, one particular area of residential, which will be on the north side of water, of the water, which is, I totally support that development. But we have a pending sale here for the property, which creates somewhat of a harm to the property owner who's owned it for some odd number of years. So we're hedging future development against the harm of the current owner. And from what I've seen, the opposition by Mr. Waldox, he doesn't present any substantial harm to his development, other than that he thinks it may be not as desirable based on a permit that he doesn't have yet, and that you, permanent use. And so they're really, when you look at it, I'd like to see both property owners happy, of course, but we can't have that. But in the case of deciding zoning, you have to look at the harm that goes to the neighborhood and to the others. And right now, there isn't any substantial harm to either party, or to the, I'm sorry, to the opposing party.
Mr.?
Ms. Lloyd.
When we're looking at trying to embrace a waterfront community, this is prime real estate. So if we are looking to future and we are supporting our bicentennial vision plan, putting these two, or these seven parcels in as commercial recreation is setting that area up for potential failure in the sense of it could be a deterrent for people to want to build. And as we are having more and more development throughout the city and attracting more residents to come in or people wanting to build residential, are we taking away a part of the gem that we have in Sandusky by putting in a huge boat storage facility, or is it going to be a drive-through? So looking at it long-term, whether we do this for just these two parcel, or seven parcels or not, if you put a drive-through in, is someone going to want to build on the property next to it? So that's why I'm saying I think it's something that we need to proceed with caution and look at. If we're going to do the full block or the full south side of the street, that's one thing, because then we're not, we're not potentially reducing property values or reducing the attraction of the other parcels that are right next to it that are going to still be listed R-140. So it's not that we don't want this development, but what if the, we also have to be careful of what precedent we're setting. So do we say, anyone that has R1, single-family residential, go ahead and promote the sale of your property, and as long as I have a pending sale, I'll be able to get it through planning commission and city commission? So we don't want to set that example. We want to make sure that we're protecting all the neighborhoods and our zoning plan in general. So I do understand that the planning commission approved it, but the planning commission can sometimes get a little emotional, and it's very hard to make this decision. So if, like, taking any, any connections at all out of it, and if this is, if Mr. Ringel weren't here today, and you were just looking at this on paper, does this transaction make sense? Or does it make sense to support the city staff and do this as a full block, or look at it in the future and then make decisions from there?
Anyone else wishing to comment before I call?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'm troubled that the planning commission appears to
Um, I'm troubled that, uh, the Planning Commission appears to have ignored our comprehensive plan, which, which very clearly stated that this area was, was, uh, right for commercial development, should be dedicated for commercial development. They, uh, and I'm willing to, to not indict...
But you meant residential.
Residential, not indict them on that issue because they didn't have the privy of much of the information that we've gleaned here today. I don't believe that Mr. Waldock is pouring 1,200 truckloads of topsoil and spending millions of dollars to buy this property to turn it back into another washing machine factory. I, I think you can look this square in the face and say, "We're going to have residential development on First Street." Is that compatible with having a C-store or boat storage across the street from residential development? Um, that, that's a, this is obviously a difficult, uh, a difficult decision for us to make because it does disadvantage, um, a family who has invested dollars, uh, for almost a century in this, in this area. But I'm not willing to give up on this area's residential area. And I'm certainly not willing to look the other way on, on this vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
Um, I, I don't wanna look at this as one family is against another family. Um, I think both families have ideas about what they would like to do with their property. I think that's, that's fair. Um, but this has come to our, to our table, and we have to make a decision, so, um, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Commission President.
Yes, Mr. Haber. Just a matter of housekeeping, uh, could we have the clerk read, uh, section B before we have a vote? We read A, but we didn't read B.
Oh, Mrs. Cresser, would you vote, uh, read, uh, B, please? One B.
Yes, this item is an ordinance disapproving the recommendation of the Planning Commission to amend the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone seven parcels from R-140 Single Family Residential District to see our commercial recreation district. The motion was made by Ms. Twine, the second by Ms. Lloyd.
Thank you. There is a motion, uh, second on the table.
First reading.
Uh, for first reading, uh, it's about the wonkiest procedure we've had in a little while, but it's, it's, uh, it's a one-off, to be certain, but I think we've had a full earring of the, uh, the thoughts and opinions tonight. Um, unless someone else has something further to add.
This is a, you say it's a first reading?
This is a first reading, yes. Mrs. Cresser, with the poll of commissioners on the ordinance one B.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That passes on first reading. Item number two, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on. Last comment. Um, Planning Commission meets before we come back, correct?
Hmm, I don't have...
They do, twenty-second.
No. Oh, twenty-seventh, I'm sorry. Twenty-seventh.
No, they don't.
Okay. I may change my vote next time if I don't hear from Planning Commission. They, they, we should hear something from them. But thank you. Answers my question.
Okay. Uh, Mr., item number two, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item two is a first reading of an ordinance making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2019.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion at second. Discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And that passes on first reading. Item number two, please.
Yes, item number two is an ordinance approving and adopting the 2019 Public Art Work Plan for the city of Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second. Discussion. If it involves anything to add, I, um, watched this go through, uh, the committee process, and there was a pretty robust discussion at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank, um, Sottnell, that is here as well from the commission. Um, we, this was our first attempt, and it's kind of our next step in the process of, uh, getting a project completed. So, first was the public art work plan that was adopted in November. Uh, this came up as next in the workflow. So, this is our time to touch back with the City Commission to let them know what the intentions of the committee, the Arts Commission are for this year. Um, it's a very diverse set of projects, but it's also on the lower cost end of things so that we could build a bank and, uh, and enough money to build, do a bigger project in the future. Um, but I think it's a great set of projects that's really geographically diverse, and diverse in the amount, or the type of projects we're gonna do, type of art, um, both from a, uh, paint, uh, to a sculpture, and, uh, I think it'll be an exciting year to see where it goes.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And that passes on first reading. Item number two, please.
Yes, item number two is an ordinance approving and adopting the 2019 Public Art Work Plan for the city of Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second. Discussion. If it involves anything to add, I, um, watched this go through, uh, the committee process, and there was a pretty robust discussion at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank, um, Sottnell, that is here as well from the commission. Um, we, this was our first attempt, and it's kind of our next step in the process of, uh, getting a project completed. So, first was the public art work plan that was adopted in November. Uh, this came up as next in the workflow. So, this is our time to touch back with the City Commission to let them know what the intentions of the committee, the Arts Commission are for this year. Um, it's a very diverse set of projects, but it's also on the lower cost end of things so that we could build a bank and, uh, and enough money to build, do a bigger project in the future. Um, but I think it's a great set of projects that's really geographically diverse, and diverse in the amount, or the type of projects we're gonna do, type of art, um, both from a, uh, paint, uh, to a sculpture, and, uh, I think it'll be an exciting year to see where it goes.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution?
Item number five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2019 sidewalk repair and replacement project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimated costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second. Discussion. Mr. Klein, would you mind giving us, uh, uh, an overview of this? I'm pretty excited that I, I read in here that this is the last, uh, this represents the last of the trees that we are unable to take down by ourselves, and I think Mr. Brady told me we are at 500-plus trees, uh, we've taken down, so...
Through you, Mr. President. Um, this is, uh, this is definitely not gonna be the last tree removal contract that we have, but it definitely gets us, uh, our list of trees that we cannot remove in-house completed. There really are only 21 trees remaining within the city that are on our list. Uh, currently, our list is a, a total is 106 trees, 85 of which we feel that we can remove in-house with the new equipment that was purchased and procured last year. Since 2015, as you've probably read in the, in the register and at the meeting a couple weeks ago, 528 total trees have been removed since 2015, 297 in-house and 231, uh, were contractually removed. In addition to the 21 that we would be removing this year as part of this contract, we still have the 70, we still have planned to put the $75,000 in the capital budget. This, this project would only be just under $50,000. We also have a stump removal contract or purchase order. We got, uh, some quotes for that as well. To remove 54 stumps citywide is just over $9,000, so we're taking that out of that $75,000 as well. So, this, fortunately, it gets, uh, the, the trees that we can't remove complete, but, uh, also typically, when we announce this and the article goes in the register, we get about 30 or 40 new phone calls and our list expands again. So, um, this year, this, this takes us to completion, and it also gives us that flexibility with the additional $20,000 that is remaining, that if we do get those, those phone calls, we can, we can proceed with removal of those additional trees.
Well, and those are exactly the kind of calls we wanna get, so...
Yes.
But, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, um, who's gonna remove those additional trees that you just talked about with that $20,000?
Through you, Mr. President.
What do you expect, yeah? Is that another contract, or what? How do you get them down?
If it would be under the $10,000, then we would do it as a purchase order, but if we get enough phone calls and enough trees, and maybe that 85 that we get, or that we currently have, that we're planning on removing in-house, maybe we can't get to all those, then we can go back and, and look at some of those as well. But if it is over $10,000, we'd obviously come back to commission for approval for a second contract.
Through you, Mr. President. Do you have something, Martin?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't think we're taking enough trees down. Um, I'm not, trees being small enough that we could cut them down doesn't mean we're gonna get them cut down this year. The staff is trimming. We're going back to where we were 10, 12 years ago that got us into the trouble we got into. More work than staff can handle. Unless you got a crew beyond the trimming crew that's gonna also cut down 85 trees, I would sugge- I, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in anybody else's opinion about that. I don't think we're doing enough, uh, with a budget that we've enlarged by over, by a significant amount of money, and this is the least number of trees we took down since we started the program.
Mr. Klein, could you address Mr. Poehl's question? I had understood that as part of this, we would be taking down a number of trees on our own, internally.
That's what we said, and I said, and I question, with who? We have a crew that's doing trimming all over town. I'm not seeing the work getting done in any kind of timely fashion, and this is just because I want it to get done sooner. I don't want us to run out of money before we get it taken care of.
Through you, Mr. President. The staff in the forestry department has tripled since the timeframe, and there's quite a bit of organization as well. The people that we have in the forestry department now are, um, they wanna work, they wanna take trees down, they wanna do the work, and they're pushing forward. They're very focused and very organized right now with the oversight of the Facilities and Properties Division, and, and, uh, like I said, I would say that, uh, with the new equipment and with the fact that we now have two additional employees, more than what we had in 2013, 14, 15, in those timeframes, we can't take down a significant amount of more trees. There is a cost savings, obviously, if we do the work in-house, and if we can't get to those 85 trees this year, like I said, we'll come back and we'll, we'll make sure that, uh, we, we get as many of those as we can, even if we have to do a second contract.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes, on the motion.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
road, so it wasn't specific addresses, and obviously, we have needs out there, and it's much easier, and this is kind of for the residents, it's much easier for us to do the analysis and get you on the list if there are specific locations that, that we know exactly where we're looking, where we're gonna be going, and if there are residents that want on that list. So, I'm encouraged by the fact that we're now starting to include Washington Park, and we're starting to, to include those other projects, because we have gotten a lot of those individual locations off the list, and it's not just those phone calls about, "Look at this entire street," and, and get this entire neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I had contacted Mr. Twine earlier this afternoon. Last year, when we had talked about the sidewalk program, we had mentioned possibly looking into doing an assessment, so giving our residents a percentage to fix their sidewalks, and so it would be both of our responsibilities, because really, it is the residents' responsibility for their sidewalk on their property. Is there an opportunity, because obviously, it didn't happen this year, in the future, or even to set aside some of the issue eight dollars in a separate account? I know paperwork is an issue, is one of the things that we talked about, but for residents that want to call in and say, "I'll do a," like, we could do a twenty-five percent match for them doing their sidewalks, and almost on a reimbursement level, because they think that we can, instead of being two to three years out, if we can utilize these dollars a little more efficiently and spread them out, I think that we would catch up a little faster.
Through you, Mr. President. That is definitely something that we'd like to look to in the future, to make sure that we handle this. Like you said, with the workload that we have right now, with all the projects we have going on, the amount of paperwork and the amount of effort that it takes to file it with the auditor and go through the entire process, it's just a very tedious, time-consuming process. It delays things several months as well, so if it is something that we can get out in front of in the future, we'd definitely like to be able to do that. Like you said, though, this year is not a good time to do that because of what we have going on.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is a resolution updating the preliminary legislation submitted by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing urban paving City of Sandusky project, PID number nine-two-eight-eight-nine, authorizing and directing the city manager to sign the preliminary legislation and to execute any necessary contracts with the Director of Transportation for this project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Let's go.
Mr. Twine, quickly, Mr. Poole.
This is real. This is real.
It's only a million nine.
It's a lot of money. Could you just describe for the public what portion of the road we're doing and what our share is?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. The project is an ODOT-funded project, an initiated project, which is resurfacing from Cleveland, on Cleveland Road, from the East Corporation limit, up Warren, down Washington, here on all of State Route six, until you get to the intersection of Tiffin and, and Old Venice or Venice Road right in there. So, it's a very long length, and it's the first, the first of two projects that they have on the list. The second project would be a couple of years later, that would be, that would finish off the western portion and the on-ramp. So, they're hoping to get started with this project at the beginning of 2020, and I would have to come back to commission for a second piece of legislation later this year to enter into an agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart?
Just a question, Mr. Twine. There was some discussion whether they would be also widening the road at this point. Is that, is that still on the table, or are they not, no one's gonna widen all the way through?
Through you, Mr. President. The, the widening was a discussion that was part of a separate initiative through the county, and that was the Cleveland Road widening portion. We've had recent discussions with them. They have several options that they're looking at. That is not included as part of this project, so that's something that we're hoping within the next two, three, four months, that can be revealed as to what their plans and ideas and recommendations would be.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Twine, I, I know my fellow commissioners will find this very interesting. If you would explain to them how the math works for ODOT, when they have the nerve to call this an eighty-twenty split.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President. This project is set up as an eighty-twenty split, as a one-point-nine-million-dollar project. The city is contributing over eight hundred thousand, so that actually comes out to about fifty-five, forty-five split. And the way that that works is ODOT does do all of the engineering upfront. By entering and do this agreement, they will do all the engineering over the next seven or eight months. And then, they will also pay for eighty percent of all the pavement markings, the asphalt, the mobilization, work zones, catch basins, manholes, those types of things, the adjustments, but then, the city's responsible for all the curb ramps, one hundred percent of all the curb ramps, and we have to do every one of them along that entire corridor. We're responsible for any curb repairs, and we're responsible for any, any base repairs that are needed in case there's damaged base. One thing that I did leave off is, I had asked ODOT, because we didn't get all of the concrete portion of Sycamore Line completed two years ago when they did that project, they're also including that portion of concrete repairs that goes from Cleveland Road down and around the bend to the bridge, so there's gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars that they're budgeting for that, that's gonna be a fifty-fifty split. So, there's a lot of things moving around here.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Poole?
At the end of the day, whether it's sixty, forty-five, whatever, we could not, this is, needs to be done, and we couldn't afford it if we had to pay it all, so that's why it's like, let's vote yes.
Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to Core and Main LP of Ashland, Ohio, for the purchase of materials and parts for in-house water main repairs in calendar year 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work performed by Cash Services LLC of Millbury, Ohio, for the Cedar Point Water Main Improvement Project in the amount of forty-five thousand, six-hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Guys are getting hungry. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item number nine is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Thorpe Drive culvert replacement project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Twine, is this essentially a bridge? Could you explain what, what that is?
Through you, Mr. President. On Thorpe Drive, I believe it's Cold Creek that goes underneath, just north of Venice Heights and south of Venice Road, there's a, a large culvert that, two years ago, we had asked ODOT to do an inspection on. They'd only done two of our bridges. Typically, it was our responsibility. When they took over the responsibility, we asked them to include that, and they found some significant corrosion in the bottom of it. So, this is a large culvert pipe, and we are going to essentially be ripping the whole thing out and replacing it, and resurfacing from there to Venice Road as well, and doing the necessary repairs. One thing I do want to point out, for anybody that lives in that neighborhood, or anybody that's driving in that neighborhood, the bridge is safe, we have posted signs, the weight limit is reduced, so pay attention to those signs. It was updated, I believe, today, based on their new report that they sent us.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
I'm staying.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
I'm staying.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number ten, please.
Item ten is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Erie County Economic Development Corporation for certain economic development and marketing services for calendar year 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I had the privilege in 2011, and then again in 2013, to be the liaison to ECHADEC, and we were an entirely different city in 2011. The, the pendulum certainly has swung somewhat in our favor. I lobbied the commission at that point in time, and I, and I am lobbying you again to approve this legislation. This is money well spent. It is certainly, I think, bread cast on the water that will return more than tenfold, and they've proven that they can, they can do that. I think this is a, a, not, not a time to take our foot off the gas pedal. I think it's time to continue to support ECHADEC. They certainly have supported us, and I certainly agree with their presentation that no matter what economic development goes on in Erie County, it is a benefit to all of us.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution, or ordinance, excuse me, is adopted. Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven is an ordinance authorizing and approving a first amendment to the demolition loan agreement in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars with the Erie County Land Utilization Corporation for the purpose of furthering blight elimination efforts in calendar year 2019, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. However, work, Mr. Laskos allows us to basically give a bridge loan to the Erie County Land Bank, so that they can continue doing the work, awaiting their reimbursement, so we can continue to take down the dilapidated structures that we've been doing. We got repaid the last time, and I'm sure we'll get repaid this time as well. Any other questions or comments on the legislation? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the motion?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number twelve, please, Mrs. President.
Item twelve is an ordinance repealing ordinance number nineteen dash zero-three-one, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Footbuilding LLC, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Hey, Burger, maybe you could set the table here for us and explain why it is we find ourselves in this particular situation?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
Would you mind if I went first, and then Mr. Heyburger?
That, that, that would be fine.
Or correct anything? Okay. I didn't really prepare anything, because I knew that there would be questions for tonight, so forgive me if I jump around a little bit. I did vote yes on the three pieces of legislation that were before the commission meeting, knowing that I had zero intent or involvement in the Huntley or Cook Building throughout the course of that week. After having some conversations, I found out that Ryan Whaley, who is full-time business partner and ex-husband, and Mr. Hogryfe, are going into business to open an axe-throwing business, and it will be located in the, in the Huntley Building. At that point, that made me quite uncomfortable with the fact that I had voted on this legislation. So, I did have a conversation with Mr. Heyburger with full intention of calling the Ohio Ethics Commission to address Mr. Schwanger's question of why there isn't an opinion listed at the Ohio Ethics Commission. After something is done, and it's past tense, they don't give an opinion on it, they can just guide you to the best of their ability. So, I basically laid all the cards out on the table for all of my business dealings So I basically laid all the cards out on the table for all of my business dealings and the divorce paperwork that I have signed. And after looking through that with the divorce papers that I signed in October, that created an issue for the voting that I did. So there is no opinion, but because I voted on the legislation, it did make it void. So everything that we voted on is just done. So that is, it's something that I took upon myself to call the Ohio Ethics Commission and to address Ms. Johnson. This commission is not getting me out of trouble in any way. It is going to their supervisory, and they'll decide what they want to do with it. This is just, the reason that it's coming back is because the vote that was taken has been thrown out. So Mr. Heyburger wanted to put on here that it was repealing it just to cover all bases and just be overly thorough on it. So this is really a technicality that it needs to come back so the tax abatement can happen. We can meet the deadlines. And I do apologize for the inconvenience to make this meeting even longer than what it was tonight. So, yeah, and then I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Heyburger, is there anything you'd like to add? And could you confirm that particularly important point that as a result of this, the legislation that we passed is void? And if we're going to do anything, we have to vote again.
Correct. Up through you, Commissioner President, to the rest of the body. Commissioner Lloyd has hit the nail on the head to ask, to answer Mr. Schwanger's question directly. The actual Ohio Reis Code site is 2921.42 subsection H, as in Henry. And that's where it says if there's a conflict, that renders this legislation void. It's not voidable, meaning that, you know, we have the ability to go back. It is void, meaning it doesn't exist. So that's why we needed to bring it back for a vote. I did put in there that requesting me to repeal the other ones, just so in five, 10 years or something, someone looks back and says, why on this date did they vote it? And then why on the next date did they vote it? The record would reflect that.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
I'm trying to read the section so I know what he's talking about. Give me a moment. Wish you'd sent this to us sooner.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
I'm sorry, you said that it makes it the legislation void?
Mm-hmm. Well, the Ohio Reis Code does.
Can you just explain that? I mean, why is, why is it void?
Under that section, it says if there's a conflict with a business associate that renders any, in which that vote was taken, any legislation void.
Mr. Chairman. So what we have is a violation of 292142A, which is what? What do you call that?
My understanding would be that there was a business associate conflict.
Well... Are you saying that a commissioner has a, has a, has a contract with us? Is that it?
No, it's not about that. It's about their business associate having an interest.
In the development.
No public official, so not only do I have the following, which is essentially have hold interest in a contract. That's what we're talking about, right?
But keep reading about the familial interest, and then it talks about business.
I realize that, but it applies. Adding on, it just says you can't do it if your brother, your sister, your cousin. So you're guilty of the violation, period. What makes it a violation is that it is her husband.
Correct.
That she voted on something for.
The business associate.
Her business, which is her business. So she has an unlawful interest in a public contract with the city of Sandusky.
Which makes it void.
Okay. That voids the contract. It doesn't... This is a circular argument because by charter, she can't stay on the commission and have a contract with us. So from the moment we pass that contract, she is no longer a commissioner. As of section four, she no longer qualifies. Is that not correct? She either has a contract or she doesn't.
That's not correct because she doesn't have an interest.
Straighten it out then.
Commissioner Lloyd does not have an interest in that contract.
Then we don't have to repeal it then, if she, if she's not connected.
This is the problem. We have two different sections. They're totally independent. Mr. Brady ran into this.
Why would you drag me into this? I'm over here trying to be quiet.
So you have two independent, two independent things. Does Commissioner Lloyd have an interest in a contract with the city? The answer is no. Or, and let's just assume even if it's yes, that would be void. The other section is, does it, there's an unlawful interest in the contract only because of a business associate, which is different than what our charter says.
Okay.
This should have been provided in a, in a document for us to read, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is just talk. And if you're the lawyer, we should, Mr. Chairman, we, I object to this, the way you've done this. I, I don't know if he's right or wrong. We've talked around it. He could have easily written all this down so that we could absorb it. I, I don't, I, I find this highly irregular if there's a section. Mrs. Lloyd has been voting on issues that deal with Mr. Hogrefe and his business for three years. We have been bringing it up, and it has been implied that she had permission. I've talked to you about it. Various citizens have called. And now that we have, she has voted on something in which there's an interest, now we get all this different conversation that should, you should write this down. We should get an opinion from you. I realize you guys can vote, but I think we should have an opinion from them.
With all due, with all due respect, Mr. Poole, you're conflating business associates. The, the, Mr. Hogrefe is not her business associate, as I understand it. The issue here, as presented by Mr. Heyburger and the Ethics Commission, is that it is her former husband, who is the business associate, who has a relationship with Mr. Hogrefe. And, and Mr. Heyburger already did send an email, I don't know, last week, sometime, on this issue, explaining why is we'd be voting again. Further discussion on, I don't know that you should.
Okay.
Further discussion on the, the motion in front of the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
Just for clarity's sake here, the law director, Mr. Heyburger, referenced 292142. And that section is violation of, or having an unlawful interest in a contract, which makes any legislation void.
That's what he has advised, yes.
Right. And if you have an unlawful interest in a contract based upon that criteria under A, being a business associate, business associate or family member, he stated business associate. What's the difference between business associate and family member in this instance in particular? If you're, if you're stating that the family member is a husband, and at that time, is it because of, and you wrote in the email, marriage, and then you had a divorce, and then you had terms of a divorce settlement. So I'm just a little bit fuzzy on what you're articulating here as to why we're void and the specific reason of the void. If it's a business associate, is it also a family member? Or we, because you mentioned the terms of the divorce settlement, which to me indicates something ongoing, not something that is included.
So, Mr. Heyburger, not quite sure I understand my colleague's question, but maybe you could, maybe you do. And you can shed some light on the question he's asking.
Just through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Lockhart. Again, the divorce settlement created a business relationship between Commissioner Lloyd and her husband. Then thereafter, there was a business relationship between the ex-husband and the Hogrefes. That's the conflict. The conflict of whether it's a family, to be honest with you, I haven't, I didn't look at that and prepare for that because we were just talking about the business associate issue. And that was my understanding what the, the Ohio Ethics Commission determined. So I'm not fully prepared to answer that, but I would have to look into that further, to be honest with you.
You want time to look for it then?
I, I don't think that's germane to the legislation today. I mean, I can report back to you.
And, and the only reason I'm saying is you're holding the entire government of the city up for this, that we have to go back and repeal or revote on something. And so we should be certain about what we're doing going forward. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, regardless, the business associate makes it a conflict and makes it void. You're asking a whole another section. So you already have one that's already makes it void. Whether or not you have two, three other instances that makes it void, it's a little more compounding.
The future conflict.
Exactly. But for today's purposes, you clearly have one conflict that creates a matter to be void.
So let's put this in some context. I know there are a couple of folks that feel, in the audience, who feel strongly about this, but this is a conflict that came to Ms. Lloyd's attention as she has related to us following our vote. She immediately reported it to Mr. Heyburger and the Ethics Commission. The seven of us voted on this unanimously two weeks ago. And there are important questions that are being asked about where we may and may not vote. That's always important. We did have that discussion with Mr. Brady a little while back. That's life in a small town with people that do things. You're going to bump into these kinds of issues. We have to try to handle them as best we can. I think we might handle it appropriately once that information came to our attention. And I'm prepared to continue to support this legislation. I don't see any reason to, to do otherwise. Are there further comments or questions on this piece of legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Fair to say, Mr. Heyburger, this is the exact piece of legislation that we voted on two weeks ago. There's nothing changed about the, the, the context wording. Any, there's nothing changed about this piece of legislation that we voted seven to one.
Correct. Just for the, for all three of these, the only with the addition to the repeal, the other ordinances, which again, they're already repealed by its very nature.
Okay.
Because it's void.
So let me just, for the folks at home, let me point out that we've droned on here for almost three hours, and the tape is about to end. It's not a tape anymore, but our recording capacity is going to end. So if we unceremoniously sign off. You'll keep recording. We lose the TV. I see. Okay, very good. So if you're watching it live, then we'll see you. But the rest of it will still be here on repeat. Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments on the legislation?
To address Mr. Brady's comment, some of this is not from two weeks ago. Some of it, and I'm looking at all three here, 12, 13, and 14. I thought some of it was from six months back. Because we voted on the, we voted on the Cook property sometime last year. And if you're not including that now, that's why I was asking about future conflict. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, but I want to, I want to get Mr. Heyburger's confirmation.
Yeah.
This is, Mr. Lasco?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Lockhart. What this commission considered six or seven months ago was just an intent to invest in the Cook project, which was necessary to show local participation for their tax credit application. This is sort of memorializing the intent to invest and formalizing the intent to invest via an actual grant agreement. And then the two new tax abatements are new pieces of legislation. But to answer the direct question, these three pieces of legislation were identical to what was introduced two weeks ago. Amounts, terms, every single word within the legislation, within the agreements are identical to two weeks ago. Not to be confused with the intent to invest legislation from six or seven months ago.
So Commissioner Lockhart is asking the question, what do we do with that? The answer to that, I think, Mr. Heyburger, confirm this for me, please, is that relationship between the Hogrefes and Mr. Whaley did not exist at that point in time. Therefore, we don't need to do anything with that.
Correct.
Further discussion on the legislation.
For, Mr. Chairman, just one question. Then, Ms., there's no commissioner on the, on the commission that has any partnership, business associate with, association with Mr. Hogrefe? Is that what we're saying? We, you focused on this, on the, on the, on the husband, and the question, Hogrefe, whatever I said, point is, did... I'm trying to avoid using your name. Am I supposed to do that? Do you have a relationship with this gentleman, a business relationship with Mr. Hogrefe?
Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm wondering. That's, that's what, that's...
Mr. Heyburger.
Chairman. Is that what you're saying? That, that, since we're focused on the husband of the commissioner, then you are saying that the commissioner has no business relationship with Mr. Hogrefe?
Business associate.
Hogrefe. Is...
The business relation, through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole. The business relationship lies between Commissioner Lloyd and the ex-husband, which then in turn has a business relationship with the Hogrefe.
Ms. Twine.
Ms., um, I guess I'm wondering if that even matters because if she's abstaining from the vote, it doesn't even matter. Now, if there is some complaint about what she did before, whatever, that needs to be taken up in a separate matter, probably with the Ethics Commission. So I think we have some legislation here that we need to vote on.
Correct.
Well, then I'm going to ask for Mrs. Cresser to pull the commissioners on the motion then.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. You did get that abstained part right this time. I was really... I don't usually get violent, but I might. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number 13, please?
Item 13 is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 19-032 and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Huntley Building LLC, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Notwithstanding all of the side issues, we do want this relationship with Mr. Hogrefe to be void. So I vote yes. That's why.
Additional comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 14, please.
Item 14 is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 19-033 and authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $500,000 through the substantial development grant program to Cook Building LLC and Huntley Building LLC in relation to the properties located at 152, I'm sorry, 154 to 162 Columbus Avenue, 119 East Market Street, and 133 East Market Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Mrs. Cresser, would you pull, I'm sorry, commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and second discussion.
This motion is written, I just want to make sure just for clarity's sake. It's written, the title is to repeal, but it's written as though we're repealing and approving. Is that correct?
Correct. You're repealing the previous and approving the new.
Same legislation.
And discussion on this legislation. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstained.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And that, thank goodness, concludes our regular items of business, and we turn it over to Mr. McRae.
Through the, thank you to the city commissioners, the audience, and the staff. I will do an abbreviated version of this. There's a couple of important dates and stuff in here that I want to make sure we get to.
I'm just kidding, Mr. McRae.
Including the donations. A donation of $50 to the Police Department Trust Fund was received from the Soloway family in memory of Andy Dunn, who was killed in the line of duty on March 19th, 2011. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion is approved. In hearing of objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Soloway family.
During the February 19th meeting, the Public Arts and Culture Commission accepted the donation of a sculpture created by Lucco to celebrate the city's bicentennial contingent upon the donating party working with the Public Works Department to assist with its final placement location as well as the cost of installation. The estimated cost of this sculpture is roughly $7,000, and the sculpture will become a part of the City of Sandusky Public Art Collection and was one of the first uses of that process. For those of you who remember, the Lucco sculpture was definitely a highlight of the bicentennial parade last year. And I believe that the Public Arts and Culture Commission has prioritized the hillside at the Transient Marina as the proper location, which can view it with sort of the sunset and the coal docks in the background. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing of objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Toluco and the Guerra family and the artists involved. And I look forward to seeing that on Sunset.
And then finally, for the donations, a $5,000 donation was received from the Dorn Foundation for the Recreation Division Department's facilitation of the Midtown Supper Club. We'd ask for a motion to accept that donation as well.
So moved.
Second. It's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing of objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Dorn Foundation.
Moving on to the police. As mentioned in the donations, the eighth anniversary of the line of duty death of Officer Andy Dunn, who was killed in the line of duty on March 19th, 2011, is approaching. The police department would ask to keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. Chief, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Oh, thank you.
I saw a nice post on Facebook today as well. Also, the Next Coffee with the Cop event will be held on March 20th from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. at The Viewpoint, 215 East Shoreline Drive. We'll be partnering with the Erie County Health Department to educate and discuss our drug takeback program as well as collecting any unused or expired medications that can be dropped off at this location during the event. Unused or expired medications left in your homes can result in accidental poisoning, misuse, or overdose. Proper disposal of unused drugs saves lives and protects the environment. Also, Sergeant Kevin Yuskiewicz begins an 11-week program titled The Public Safety Leadership Academy on March 25th at the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy. The courses are taught by professors at the Ohio State University John Glenn School of Public Affairs. For finance, the next committee meeting is Friday, March 22nd at 8:00 a.m. We'll be going over the budget. Moving on to public works, we're currently seeking several hardworking and motivated seasonal part-time and full-time employees. Applications can be submitted at Human Resources. The Greenhouse staff has already begun accepting palm and fern reservations for Good Friday, Easter, and graduation, so please plan ahead and call 419-627-5884 to place an order. And also, in support of a recommendation made by the Veterans Memorial Park Committee, Friends of the Greenhouse received grant funding from the Mylander Foundation, the Dorn Foundation, and the Erie County Community Foundation to place a Gold Star Family Memorial and Veterans Park to honor families of fallen service members. The Fight Design Group provided in-kind design and site planning services to the Friends of the Greenhouse. A construction of the memorial is proposed to begin on March 25th. We also want to thank Commissioner Twine, who through her role at the Ohio Veterans Home, played an active role in the planning process for this. And we'd like to request a motion from the city commission to approve this project.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing of objection, the motion is approved.
Moving on to community development, grass cutting per Section 531 of the City of Sandusky codified ordinances. No owner or occupant of real property within the city shall permit their grass or weeds to grow above eight inches in height. The city published the annual required notice in the Sandusky Register on February 28th of this year, notifying all property owners of the grass cutting ordinance and the future steps the city will undertake to ensure compliance with applicable codes. Also, for fire damage structures, the city has received permission to bid out the asbestos abatement and demolition of both 1114 First Street and 624 Camp Street. However, the owner of 1114 Fifth Street has hired a demolition contractor, and demolition activity has commenced on March 4th. Therefore, this property has been removed from the bid list, and the city is not, is only moving forward with the bidding out of 624 Camp. For the planning department, RFQs and RFPs, the following are proposed to be issued within the next few weeks. Hike Hancock Walk Wayne, the Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission, is seeking proposals from qualified artists or teams of artists to create temporary, site-specific, outdoor installations in conjunction with the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative's Hike Hancock and Walk Wayne events, which are meant to encourage people to walk the corridors of the city. Also, temporary transit shelter murals. The Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission is seeking proposals from qualified artists or teams of artists to create temporary artworks that will be installed on Sandusky Transit Bus Shelters and Bike Share. The planning department has drafted and intends to issue an RFP to request proposals for a private bike share system. The city and Lakery Shores and Islands are looking for a company or organization to run a bike share system that enhances the community and visitor environment by providing an affordable, efficient, environmentally friendly dockless bike share program that complements existing public transportation systems and provide residents and visitors a healthy, convenient way to move around the city. Also, the library schools and Sandusky Central, the Sandusky City Schools and Sandusky Central Catholic Schools have all expressed interest in participating in a Sandusky Votes nonpartisan voter registration campaign. And the Greyhound bus line has delayed moving its local bus stop to Sandusky Transit System, located at 1230 North Depot Street, starting until April 1st, 2019. They're still working out some software logistics for the new location. We look forward to that eventual move. And the February fixed route spark count was at 13,939 rides, an increase of approximately 40% from February of 2018, where the count was 5,459 rides. So that the growth of transit with our new partnerships continues to be impressive. Also, the regular... Also, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 27 at 4:30 p.m. in the conference room. And the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, scheduled for Thursday, March 21 at 4:30 p.m., will also take place in the conference room. Our landmark commission meeting has been canceled for this month due to a lack of applications. Moving on to recreation, and the final remarks of mine for this evening are the Spring Break Camp for grades K to 12 starts Monday, March 25 through Wednesday, March 27, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Sandusky High School Cafeteria and Gymnasium. This free program provides quality, traditional, and non-traditional programming for youth during out-of-school time, with lunch being provided each day by Pizza House and the Salvation Army. The first year of this camp was last year, and was really, really successful, and we're excited that it's one of the many initiatives that the Rec Department brings to the community. With that, I conclude my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McRus. Questions, comments? Mr. Chairman. Waddington.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask the city manager about the census.
Yes.
If we appoint somebody, because I think it's going to be pivotal for us. If we drop below 25,000, we could lose a lot of federal and state funding. So, I think it's time to snapshot, maybe have someone on staff look into that. Because I worked on the 2010 one that we had at the Associate High School, and that was, this is fun, but I don't know if I want to be part of this one. We'll break.
Through the commission president, Commissioner Waddington, we've already begun to have some discussions about this in the planning department, and it is likely that Talon Floor, our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator, will be our point person, but he's already had talks with others in the community that have interest in the census, and really has thought that this kind of voter registration piece is a logical first step in getting together a similar group that can then work on census-related issues. So, we will reach out to the commission to see if any of you want to participate in that as well, but we agree it's an important count.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
With respect to this, it raises a point that's kind of been a running thought in my mind, is that we actually need to focus on metrics of actually bringing folks into the community. And we have some tools in place, but we don't have a comprehensive plan on exactly that. You know, from what I looked at, just real briefly, the census has an estimate out by 2010 or beyond, that estimated that we probably would have lost about 500 people. And right now, we're somewhere around 25,750 by the true last estimate from the census. And if that's the case, if we lost around 500 people or 400, we should actually have something that is measurable that we're using to bring folks back into the city. And like, we have down payment assistance from our development, but we should couple that into a package of actually bringing folks in and knowing how many we've actually brought into the city. We have some potential with the old Coal Creek property, I think, to build new homes, but we need to, as Mr. Commissioner Waddington said, if we drop below 25,000, this is critical. So, I see this as an emergency that we actually do. I'd like to hear something that we're going to do about actually instituting something to the city.
Through the city commission president, Commissioner Lockhart, I've got a lot of work in my previous position, looking at the census and demographic changes within communities. And it can be very complicated, because particularly in cities like Sandusky, which have aging populations of pensioners, and not necessarily a generation behind those pensioners who are still working in those factory jobs, even as a community starts to improve and turn its economy around, it can be really difficult to actually maintain positive population growth. So, the one thing that I would say is, although you can be adding a lot, you can be seeing changes that necessarily are improving the quality of the residential base. And so, I just want to make sure that whatever we do to track population growth also tracks it across several demographic areas, so that we can look at it. And I think it's absolutely true. I will say, though, that between the down payment assistance, the residential tax abatement, the current development and construction of over 100 new units downtown, you know, all of those are actually meant very much to inject new population into the city, and, you know, the rehab programs that we're doing. But it's not necessarily a straight line, in many ways, based on things that happened 20 years ago, that are going to make it really hard for us to turn the corner on population immediately. But I welcome the idea, you know, we're actually hosting and getting ready to announce a meeting with Realtors, which is the first annual meeting that we want to do, which is to talk to Realtors about how they can better market and sell Sandusky, because we think over the last generation, and Mackenzie's been working on pulling that together with assistance from Deb Eversaw and Matt from their office, Realtors have lost the ability to sell urban neighborhoods. They go straight to schools, district rankings, and suburban housing stock. And we know there's a growing population of people that want to and would choose, consider living in Sandusky. So, there's a lot of small steps we can take. I think we can get even more intentional with how we market the city and what we do with programs, but we definitely look forward to diving into that conversation.
One of the things that I saw in, I spoke to the Workforce Dean, or Dean of Workforce and Development, he was in Cleveland, in Ohio Cities, from California. One of the steps that they took in the Sacramento area specifically is they partnered with the institutions that they have there to create education funding, scholarships for people who would move into the city. And so, in those particular fields, healthcare, you know, police and fire, and what they did is they partnered up with all their healthcare agencies and put money into a fund to increase the actual population through education. I think that's one of the strongest things you can do, when you have housing and education extend together. So, perhaps we could look at something like that. And I know we had spoken about it some time ago, but maybe it's time to really get into here about an actual.
Absolutely.
Additional comments for the city manager? And any items of old business? The items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I have no executive session to discuss this.
If you think for a minute that's going to increase your, improve your popularity for the rest of the commission, I don't know that you're right. Any other items of new business? And we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission, step to the microphone, give your name, address, and thoughts, please.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I'll be brief. I'm tired. I'm going to bring up the time-honored topic of potholes in the city of Sandusky. I live out in the west end of town, out by Mirrorwood Village, and received a call the other day that city crews were out filling potholes between Fremont Ave and the area out towards Sidetracks, which is a bar out there on Barrett Road. But they failed to go down McCartney Road and fix the thousands of potholes that are on McCartney Road. So, my question is for the city commissioner from staff is, is the filling of potholes has become a complaint-based only, or is there a list of streets that are, every year we have to go to? So, there should be a list, and McCartney Road should be on it. Now, I did send Aaron Klein a email, I think it was Friday or Saturday, and he responded back today that, you know, thanks for the information, you know, here's the link to file a complaint or concern. But do we have to complain about potholes, or is there a system where we go to the streets that are typically redheaded stepchildren on a yearly basis and fix them? Or are we really relying on complaint-based?
Mr. Klein, are you able to address that? I've lost track now, I apologize. We are a little late, a little long into this meeting. But when is McCartney Road scheduled to be repaved?
This year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, they, I mean, they came back, they came out today and did, and, you know, did the work, filled in the potholes. But it seems like every year, somebody on McCartney Road has a complaint about it before crews come out to fix it. Okay, so, if it's going to get repaved, that fixes the problem on that street, fine and dandy. But what about the rest of the streets that on a yearly basis, we have to go back and fill potholes? There should be a list somewhere of troubled streets that aren't getting paved, that they should at least be automatically filled come springtime for potholes until they're on the schedule to get repaved.
Mr. Klein, is it fair to say that there is, we pave, or we repair potholes other than those that are complaint-driven?
Yes.
And do we go through the streets to look, actively look for potholes?
The crews are out on a daily basis this time of year, going through zones and proceeding through their lists of streets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm glad there is a list. I guess I'll probably have to, maybe I'll ask for that. 528 trees taken down since the tree program started.